Okay, it is 7:34 PM on Tuesday, June 10th, 2025. Good evening. My name is Christian Klein. I am the Chair of the Arlington zoning Board of Appeals, and I am calling this meeting of the Board to order. Now, I would first like to confirm that all members and anticipated officials are present. So, members of the zoning Board of Appeals, we have Roger Dupont.
Here.
You have Adam LeBlanc.
Here.
You have Brad Bernowski.
Here.
Patrick Hanlon is going to be joining us late. He'll be here, uh, he's thought between 8:00 and 8:15. Is Venkatesh Holly on? Let's see, Venkatesh in the waiting room. Okay, do not see him at the moment. On behalf of the town, we have Colleen Ralston, our clerk and zoning assistant. Colleen, you're with us, right?
Yes, here, sorry.
Nope, no worries. And then, on behalf of 103 Thorndike Street, we have Christopher Alvin.
Present.
Have you with us for, on 67 Foster Street, we have Christopher DeCilio. Mr. DeCilio here?
I saw him in the waiting room a few minutes ago, but I don't.
For 208 Jason Street, Natalia and Andy Marks.
Andy, here.
Perfect, thank you. For 36 Glen Avenue, we have Jack Joyen.
Here.
Have you with us. And then, for 3 Inverness Road, Bradford Perkins and Aaron Misek.
Here.
Perfect.
Can you hear me now? This is Chris DeCilio.
Oh, yes, can hear you now, thank you.
I, apparently, I was on mute and didn't know why, but I'm now off of mute.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so tonight's meeting of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely, consistent with the bill signed by Governor Healy on March 28th, 2025, which extended the temporary provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to June 30th, 2027. The extension of these provisions allows public bodies to hold their meetings remotely by providing live, adequate, alternative means of public access to the deliberations. This meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast by ACMI. Members of the public court participating via Zoom and who wish to offer public comment should be aware that they will be asked to provide their full name and address so that a complete public record of the meeting can be taken in accordance with state law. All participants of this meeting are advised that people may be listening to the meeting without offering public comment, and those people are not required to identify themselves. Any votes that are taken this evening will be conducted by roll call. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. As Chair, I reserve the right to take items out of order in the interest of promoting an orderly meeting. As the Board will be taking up new business at this meeting, as Chair, I make the following land acknowledgement. Whereas, the Zoning Board of Appeals for the Town of Arlington, Massachusetts, discusses and arbitrates the use of land in Arlington, formerly known as monotomy, an Algonquin word meaning swift waters. The Board hereby acknowledges the Town of Arlington is located on the ancestral lands of the Massachusetts tribe, the tribe of indigenous peoples from whom the colony, province, and Commonwealth have taken their names. We pay our respects to ancestral bloodline of the Massachusetts tribe and their descendants who still inhabit historic Massachusetts territories today. Okay, so, uh, tonight, we do have a very full agenda. And also, as I noted, Mr. Hanlon is going to be joining the meeting late, and we do need his vote in order to proceed on, um, 103 Thorndike. So, um, I'd be taking business slightly out of order. And we'll take up Thorndike Street once Mr. Hanlon arrives. So with that, because of the, uh, the large public interest in it, I think I am going to go ahead and move to item, uh, number seven on our docket, which is 3852, uh, 36 Glen Avenue. So, uh, before we start with that, um, uh, before opening tonight's meeting for public hearings, uh, just some quick ground rules. After I announce each agenda item, I will ask the applicant to introduce themselves or themselves and make their presentation to the Board. I'll then request that members of the Board ask what questions they have on the proposal. And after the Board's questions have been answered, I'll open the meeting for public comment. At the conclusion of public comment, the Board will deliberate and vote to either continue or to close the public hearing. All votes will be conducted by roll call vote. The final vote on any matter before the Board will be taken at a subsequent meeting once the written decision has been drafted and provided to the Board. The decision will then be filed with the town clerk, starting a 20-day appeal period under state law. After that time, the applicant may proceed with their building permit. However, under state law, no decision granted by this Board shall take effect until a certified copy of the final decision has been filed with and recorded at the Middlesex South Registry of Needs in Cambridge by the applicant. So with that, we will go ahead and proceed with, uh, 36 Glen Avenue. So if the applicant would please go ahead and introduce themselves and tell us what they are proposing to do.
Um, I'm Leslie Mahoney, the architect. I'm actually the one presenting.
Oh, good, good to have you with us.
For Jack. So.
Do you need, um, ability to share?
I do.
Mr. Ralston, if you would take care of that for us.
You should be all set.
Okay. Let me see if I can. I guess that's as big as it'll get. Hmm. There we go. Okay, you can see that now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So the project, as you said, is at 3436 Glen Ave. This is a two-family, zoned two-family. This is the existing structure at the end of Glen Ave. And this is, um, Emerson Road, which is a private road currently in disrepair. You can't really drive down it, and there's cones that are here by the town. It is a road, however, not a walking path. And, um, we propose to, you know, repair it as well. This piece that shows up here is a large parking area that is, uh, raised up on retaining walls in order to get a flat piece of land on the site for parking. I will show that to you. The site drops rather precipitously across the whole site. This is the house, the current two-family. The front of it is, um, shingle siding, and it is wrapped past the porches with asphalt shingle siding. There is a, the road, you can't see it well in this photo, but goes down to the right here. This tree no longer exists. The former owners took it away. There is a, the single tree on the property is out here in front by the sidewalk. And it, um, we're proposing to put more trees and landscaping on the site than exists now. We're not proposing to remove any, although there aren't many to remove, given one. So this is the front elevation currently. We are looking to open up these front porches to make it more friendly to the neighborhood. This is the rear, and you can see that it, you know, everything drops off rather precipitously. It's considered a two-and-a-half story. This basement doesn't count as a story, since very little of it is actually exposed. Here are some dimensions that we have. This is the location of the new unit two. The proposal is to, um, take the current two-family and make that a one-family with the second unit attached to it. These are dimensions to the neighboring properties at the rear. And one neighbor did mention that the rear yard dimension was inaccurate. That was taken here, and they're right. The new rear yard dimension would be taken here. So at a minimum, we would have, um, 22 feet to the property line. And, um, else do we have here? We're going to remove this garage, and the new garage will be underneath unit two. And the new open space for unit two is going to be, we're going to take advantage of the flat area up here in the front, which is currently paved and not well. Part of it's all torn up. We would like that flat area to be landscaped, so it, you know, we're really presenting a much friendlier front to the street. So over here, you can see the proposal. And the drive would come in off of the newly repaved Emerson Road to get into the garage underneath unit two. Currently, unit one is non-conforming. It sits outside of the setback here, but everything else is within the setbacks. The open space, as required for unit two, sits up front here, as I had mentioned, on the area that is currently parking. The unit one open space sits in the rear. Since the lot is so, um, steeply graded, there is no other easy place to put open space. This sits back here. In terms of square footage, it's the amount required, but the grade is over 8%. And we're happy to use retaining walls, um, whatever is necessary. If it needs to be flat or flatter, um, we just don't want to interfere with any drainage by doing that. And I can show you the steepness of the site briefly. I mean, clearly, we've got, you know, steep grade going on with some flat space up front, which is crazy that that's where the parking is. It's unfortunate. Um, in terms of the elevations, as I mentioned, on unit one, we will be opening up the front porches. I think those will be really nice, bringing it back to its original, taking all that asphalt siding off and really, um, cleaning up the entire structure. Unit two sits way back. Obviously, the splat in drawing doesn't show it that way. But it sits back 31 feet from the front porch. You can see it much better here in the side elevation. And unit two sits down into the site, so it's nestled under unit one, really, you know, so it doesn't dwarf the rest of the property. We're trying to keep it at a smaller scale. These garages, one would be used for unit one and one for unit two, and there is a walkway between the two underneath. This is the side that faces the neighbor on Glen Ave. And then this is the rear elevation. We'll just be opening up the back of unit one a bit with some more windows. And unit two, as you can see, it's sitting there. I don't know if you need me to go through the floor plans themselves on the interior. Basically, the first floor is living space on both units. The second floor are bedrooms. We are trying to use the attic space on unit one. There's limited head height up there, but by putting a dormer in, I think it will work okay. You can see the dormer here. So we can get a little bit of space up there for a fourth bedroom or study. Um, and then the, uh, the ground floor plan will clean up the basement a bit to get some area that might be usable in unit one. And unit two is two garages with storage. This just shows the relative size of the lot compared to the neighbors. It is, you know, it is substantially larger than those on Glen Ave and those behind it on Kimball. Kimball, obviously, being single residence and Glen Ave being, um, two families. The lot also, I should mention, was at one point, um, a double lot and was made into a single lot. These are the calculations for, you know, I don't think you need to see those unless you really want to. And then the overall building calculations just made larger here to show you that we are making unit one smaller by removing the porches and not using that accessory garage. So it's going from 4,400 to 3,879, and unit two is proposed at 3,420. The open spaces all conform in terms of amount of area, except for the fact that in unit ones, as I mentioned, doesn't conform in terms of grade. And I believe that's where we are.
Right, well, thank you very much. So just a few questions running through the application. So, um, as you had noted, the, there are a few non-conformities, um, with the site. So that, in the application, the frontage is listed as being, um, 54 feet. Is that including both exposures, both on Emerson and on Glen?
Oh, no, that is just the Glen exposure.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so.
That's interesting. So would you generally add both of those and then say?
It's on two, it's on two ways.
Right.
Because Emerson is considered a, even though it's a private way, it's still, I believe, an accepted, um, road within the Town of Arlington, so it would.
Yeah.
So that is actually conforming.
So it is actually conforming then, when you add them together? Is that, okay, that makes sense?
Yeah, I'm pretty, I'm pretty certain that Emerson was accepted by the town. I would need to do a file confirmation, but.
Okay.
So, but the lot then is fully conforming. And as you had noted, um, the current front yard depth, um, off of Glen is only 11.7 feet, with minimum is 20, so that's an existing non-conformity. And then also, the left-hand side, um, is listed as 6.17 feet, where the minimum is 10. And you had noted that as well. And then for the usable open space, um, is there currently on the site any land that is, at least 25 by 25 feet, that is, um, less than 8% grade?
Not that is not parking, no.
Okay. And you had noted that you were planning to add some usable open space when you take up the, the prior, the prior driveway, but otherwise.
Right.
Okay.
And we're, again, we're also happy to add a retaining wall, if it makes sense, in the rear, to really, you know, because back here in this back corner, it's less steep than elsewhere. So we could perhaps get some back here, if that made sense.
Is the, are you increasing the impervious area by more than 350 square feet, do you know?
No.
You're not, okay.
I don't think so, no.
Okay. That would be the, the threshold for, um, needing a, uh, stormwater plan with the town engineer. And you had noted the trees. So this, um, so the application that's before us is an application for a, um, a large addition under 542B6, which requires that, uh, any addition that's larger than 750 square feet receive a special permit, uh, from the Board of Appeals. The Board, in addition to the regular required findings, which lead to a determination that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts, additionally, the Board needs to find that the alteration or addition is in harmony with other structures and uses in the vicinity. In, in determining that, it needs to consider the dimensions and setbacks in relation to abiding structures and uses, and it needs to consider conformity with the purposes of the bylaw. So the, the existing house is a two-family house because of the units are stacked.
That's right.
And then you had noted the proposal is for a duplex, which would be side by side. And, uh, there is a party wall between the two, which in, in this plan would be, um, sort of towards the re, yeah, towards the rear of the existing house. Okay. Parking off of Glen.
Did you want to see the plans or just the site plan here?
It's okay. Do you have a, do you have a dimensions site plan from the, uh, from the surveyor, by any chance?
Um, yeah, I don't have the surveyor, um, the survey pulled up, but I can. That will just take a moment.
Yep, no worries.
Let me pull it up elsewhere. Pull it up. Well. Can you see that? I have it in my CAD file here.
Okay, they were just saying, I still see the PowerPoint that you have.
All right, I'll have to stop sharing, reshare. And that's the wrong one. Just a moment. I don't know why it's not letting me share it. You have it on your files. Do you want to share it from your side?
Um, no, it's just look, I don't.
Is there a specific question?
No, it's just a, it's just that the, it'll be a clearer image to see.
Yeah, it is. I can still try to get it.
All right, I think we're.
You have another question?
Yeah. So actually, going to go ahead and ask, uh, members of the Board what questions they may have in regards to the application.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bernowski.
So will the, and will the, um, cars enter into the garage off of Emerson Street then? I'm just trying to understand which, which is going to be used, okay?
Yes, that's correct.
And that's, and that's, that street is, you see, you indicated that it was in a state of disrepair. I'm just wondering.
It is, um, yeah, I'm trying to pull this back up again. Yeah, the, um, it's sort of, um, gravel that's all torn up and asphalt that's in big chunks, and you really can't drive down it right now.
But, but similarly, I guess, is, is the plan, the hope then that by the time this is built, it will be drivable?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Yes. No, the owner is planning to, um, fix that drive and, you know, be able to use a new driveway.
And is there intent to, uh, repair the road just to the end of the property or to continue it all the way to Kimball?
Uh, that's a good question. Jack would have to answer that.
Our current plan is to just end it at the end of our property line on Kimball. And Christian or Leslie, I can pull up the existing plot plan if need be.
If you have it, that'd be great, yeah.
Mr. Ralston, if you wouldn't mind. Yes, Jack Joyen, who's?
If I can be allowed to share.
You're all set.
Okay.
Yeah, there we go.
Are there other questions from the Board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. LeBlanc?
I don't know if I necessarily have as many questions as maybe just some more general comments right now. This application is reminiscent of the Franklin Street case we had a number of months ago in terms of, I think, what's being proposed, um, for this. So I think we need to, uh, look back as to what we did there when we're presented with this application. The other thing I wanted to bring up was there were some notes in the, or in one of the letters from the abutters about the, how much wall is connecting, um, these two, uh, units. So I looked at that, and it looks like, based off of what I could see on the drawings, the wall, that unit is 30 feet wide, and eight feet of that wall is not shared. So 22 feet of that wall is shared. So that's 73% of the wall is shared. And I believe the, the definition is something about, um, being substantially shared or something like that. So I, I think we need to also determine if, if we're satisfied with that, what that definition means and if that's meeting the definition here for, um, for that. I guess I do have one question. Is there a reason why, um, renovating the structure as is, but creating, um, two full floors for each unit? So expanding, um, the roof level and the basement level? Was that explored or did, was just the sort of townhouse units, uh, decided upon?
So you're saying just taking unit one and using the basement and the attic?
Yeah, so.
To get two units that are newly renovated?
Yeah, so there's two units now. I'm assuming they're on floors one and two.
Right.
There's many, many, many examples throughout town of, uh, dup, you know, duplexes having a basement in first floor and, uh, third floor and second floor. That are, so, you know, substantially sized units.
Right. Well, I think that the attic isn't very usable to, due to the height. And to increase the height of the attic would go above the 35-foot height restriction. So I didn't explore that. And since so much of this basement is non-windowed, you know, it's not possible to have living space, basically. You know, we, we did explore taking the entire thing and extruding it further out. But we just weren't as happy with the result. You know, to get some more space, go telescoping it similar to Franklin Street.
Anything else, Mr. LeBlanc?
I'm good right now.
Anything else from the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I was.
Yep, Mr. Dupont.
Trying to get out of the screen, and I couldn't, couldn't get out.
Out of the screen and I couldn't, couldn't get out. Uh, I just wanted to, because the application says, uh, that there is forty-four hundred and seventeen point six five, uh, square feet of GFA, and I, I'm just curious what that includes. I'd, I'd just like to know how that was calculated.
Right, that includes everything in unit one. That includes, um, the basement space, the first floor, the second floor, which includes those enclosed porches on the front, um, some of the attic. I'm trying to bring back and, um, where's that? On the last page of the presentation here. And the accessory garage of three sixty.
Okay, and, and my only observation is that, and I, I was looking at the assessor's records. So they give twenty-seven hundred and seven, uh, square feet of finished area, and I realized that, you know, we use sort of a different computation for gross floor area, but.
Right. I think they're just using the first floor and the second floor.
Right, and so my, my observation is, I mean, these houses like this are so common throughout the town, that number forty-four hundred just seemed unusually high to me. So when you look at the application, you're, it makes it look like you're going from forty-four hundred and seventeen to seventy-two, seventy-five, which is under three thousand, but really what you're doing, and I don't know how much of the seventy-two, seventy-five, I don't know how much of the, um, second building that is proposed would be living area.
The first and second floor.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm, so I'm sort of interested, and you don't have to have the numbers now, I'm just thinking that we're really going from twenty-seven hundred square feet of living area to some other fairly substantial. So that the forty-four hundred to seventy-two, seventy-five is a little bit misleading, and I don't mean that, that you're misleading, I'm just saying that itself gives a different impression than the fact that I think that the size of the house now, which is sort of typical throughout the town and certainly within the neighborhood, is really this twenty-seven hundred square foot living space, so I, I need to sort of, uh, I, I need to sort of evaluate that versus what we're talking about when you look at the total living space that's being proposed for the, you know, for the, uh, addition and the existing home, so. That's all. I just wanted to point that out. The numbers seem a little bit, uh, misleading.
Right. Yeah, I agree with you.
Thank you, Mr. Dupan. Um, anything else from members of the board at this time? Not. Um, in a minute, I'll be opening the meeting for public comment. Uh, so public questions and comments will be taken as they relate to the matter at hand. It should be directed to the board for the purpose of forming its decision. Members of public will be granted time to ask questions and make comments. Uh, members of public who wish to speak should digitally raise their hand using the button on the React tab in the Zoom application. Those calling in by phone, please dial star nine to indicate you would like to speak. You will be called upon by the chair, asked to give your full name and address for the record, and be given time for questions and comments. All questions are to be addressed through the chair. Please remember to speak clearly. Uh, once all public questions and comments have been addressed, uh, the public comment period will be closed. Um, so I know we had, the board was, had received, um, I believe, four, uh, correspondences, uh, before this morning, and then there were a lot that came in later this afternoon. Um, I'm assuming a lot of the, um, those people are here, um, to address the application, just to ask you, um, if, uh, to just, uh, speak, don't forget to give your name and address and to, to speak clearly to, uh, what is before us. So with that, um, the first hand I see is Gina Sonder.
Hello, this is Gina Sonder. I live at thirty-three Kimball Road. And I have a few questions. Um, for impervious surface, does the footprint of the new building count as impervious surface?
It does, um, but it would also, because they say they're removing the garage, removing the driveway, that would then get subtracted out and the new driveway added back in, so it's sort of a, there's a little bit of give and take on what that, on what that becomes.
Right, so the old driveway goes, the new driveway replaces it, and then there's the, the footprint of the, of the new building, and that footprint is less than the, the threshold?
Um, I believe that, um, the architect indicated that it was less than, there was, it was not more than three hundred and fifty square feet in addition to the existing impervious area.
Right, and the new driveway, we're considering making impervi- um, pervious materials.
Oh, excellent, okay. Um, and then I, my understanding is that Emerson Road is a DCR road? Um, is that what, um, you found out as well? Um. It belongs to the DCR, the.
No, I did not.
I believe so.
I would need to.
But it is not in Town of Arlington Road.
Okay.
Um. So I don't know about your frontage question, um, how that relates to it, and I don't know, um, the jurisdiction of who gets to pave it or not pave it. Um, and for now, that's all I have as questions. Oh, except for the duplex question. Um, I'd like to, I'd like to get a better sense of how much of the, um, existing building touches the new building in, in, um, and I, I didn't think it was as much as seventy-five percent. I thought it was much more like fifty percent, so I'd like to find that out. Thank you.
Okay. Just taking a quick note. Hey, um. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Uh, next, um, I see on our list is Lynette Culverhouse?
Yes, good evening, um, thank you. Um, I just want to make sure that I, I'm, I live on, um, Draper Avenue, which is in the neighborhood. And I want to be sure the board knows that Emerson Road is not a road. It's a footpath that's used by people in the neighborhood to cut through, to get to Arlington Center, um, and for visiting other neighbors. And that it is bordered on one side by trees that drop down to Mystic Valley Parkway. So I would want to be sure that that remains accessible for pedestrians and that none of the trees are removed.
Well, the trees definitely would not be removed because they're not on our property.
And would the, um, because we do need to figure out a little bit more about the, the prominence of the road, but would the, uh, would the work on improving the road change the, the current public access to that, that way from Kimball to Glen?
I mean, I think if the road goes through to Kimball, then it can be used by people to walk through. Yeah, it's a road. I don't, I mean, it may be being used as a footpath, but I believe it's a road.
One, one end is too narrow, I think, to be built into a road for cars.
Was there anything further, Ms. Culverhouse?
No, that was what I wanted to be sure that the board knew, because it was a little, I, it was misrepresented as a road for cars, but it's really a footpath. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Um.
Not sure about that.
Next on my list, I have Steve Moore.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Steve Moore, Piedmont Street. Um, my, my question's also around, uh, this Emerson Road. My guess is, and of course it's only a guess and you're gonna have to investigate it, is that this is a paper street that was never developed into a real street. Or, or it was, but it's now reverted back into a, a path. The way this happens around town quite a bit, actually. Um, and, uh, I, if it is an accepted street, the, or the applicant certainly is going to have to, um, uh, find out whether or not they actually can touch that street at all um, with paving and using as a driveway, since it is not, um, necessarily their land. I've had this question repeatedly, or about what is the status of paper streets around town? Can they be developed by abutters? And I'm not sure I have a particularly clear answer yet, because I've seen continued cases of streets around town and the case for the tonight's, uh, tonight's case as well, that, that the abutter wants to use a paper street for a particular purpose. And if they don't own that land, I'm not sure that they can necessarily make that assumption. Um, just as it's being used as a footpath, it would, um, that's what it's fallen into for current existing use. But as a paper street, it can, it could be developed into a road if the town ever chose to accept it. That won't happen, of course. But I did notice that along the edge of this road that really is narrow like a path to the, to the right, towards Mystic Valley Parkway, there are some, there is greenery and trees, and to repave it into a useful driveway, it's gonna have to take those, whatever vegetation's there, down to make it accessible for cars with. Right now, it doesn't look like it really is. And, and that would be just, uh, potentially difficult with the idea of who, who owns and controls that link. I, I do have a question, Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask through you. When was this property purchased by the most recent owner?
Um. Ms. Mahoney, do you know that?
By the current owner?
Yes.
It was purchased in April.
Okay, um, and I'm wondering if, you, you said that the tree that had been taken down that really is on the edge of that Emerson Road area there was done by the previous owner?
That's right. Well, I don't know if it was done by the previous owner. It was not done by the current owners who purchased the property in April.
Right, right. I wanted to just, uh, to basically find out that for a fact, because the taking of trees preemptively for a development is not, uh, not allowed.
Oh, no, you can look at the trunk. It's clear it was done a while ago. Um, one other thing, I'm in receipt of a document here that shows Emerson Road as being a road as of nineteen seventeen, so. It's, it's clearly a road on this document, and it's texted to me. If I could figure out how to show it, I would. But I'm not sure I can figure that out.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, again, I believe this is a paper street, and, uh, anyway, the.
I think it's a real road.
Uh, well, or has fallen and disappeared. Anyway, I, uh, those are the total of my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Uh, next up, we have, uh, Daniel Brooks.
Yeah, um, I'm Daniel Brooks. I live at forty-five Kimball Road. Um, the first question, well, first of all, I would just like to make the statement that I have previously been told by the town that Emerson Road is in fact a paper road. Um. If I was misinformed and it is a private road, who owns it? Um. Additionally, uh, if what, you know, if we're talking about simply building an addition onto a house and all of a sudden now we're talking about paving public streets, um, that feels like a large escalation from a home improvement scenario. Uh, and I have questions about, for example, who will maintain it in the future? Like, is the town going to adopt it so it doesn't immediately fall into disrepair again? Um, or is this person only paving part of the road, in essence, turning what is currently a public use space into a, a private driveway? Um, I would also, I sent a letter to the zoning board. I would like to read part of that.
Please.
If you don't mind. Um, the application for the proposed construction uh, dismisses concerns about overloading the public water drainage and sewer systems under the pretense that there is no increase in the number of households. I find this claim to be disingenuous and made entirely without evidence. It should be obvious that any space designed to accommodate more people, for example, by significantly increasing the living space and adding additional restrooms can increase the burden on these systems even without increasing the number of households. The applicant clearly demonstrates a lack of knowledge or perhaps empathy regarding a critical situation pertaining to those resources within our neighborhood. The town of Arlington, however, is well aware of the issue where raw sewage frequently rises through the manhole covers onto Kimball Road during significant rainfall events, which typically occur multiple times a year, sometimes more than once a month. The town has determined that this is an inherent flaw in the design of the sewage system and in part uh, due to Kimball Road being a local or possibly the absolute low point in town. When the sewage overflows, it then mixes with storm drain water, which also floods onto the street on a regular basis, which then makes its way directly into Mystic Lake. The town engineer has informed us that there is no easy way to fix the current situation. The proposed construction plan calls for doubling the number of bathrooms and increasing the living space by seventy-five percent, and is clearly designed to accommodate more people than the existing space, even if the applicant refuses to admit it, and directly adds to and exacerbates the strain on the current sewage system. It also does not address any potential new or unforeseen drainage issues that would have to be resolved via the existing storm drain. I would like to call for any proposed construction that has the potential to increase the burden on either the sewer or the storm drain systems that route along Kimball Road to be propos- postponed until after the town has invested in and completed a long-term solution for both of these systems and reserve the current crisis in this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Um. With that, uh, next on our list, uh, is Julie Horvath.
Yeah. Um, Mr. Chairman, thank you for this meeting. Um, my husband James and I are here. I put my hand down. Um, so we live at thirty-seven Kimball Road and we are one of the direct abutters. I do agree with everything that my neighbors have said so far. Um, one of our concerns is the maintenance of that road, uh, after they put one in, if that ever happens. Um, the, uh, Leslie mentioned when some, when Chairman, when, Mr. Chairman, when you asked about impermeable surfaces, her answer was, I don't think so. So I'd like more clarity on that, whether it's a yes or no. Um, she mentioned the project being of smaller scale, which is not correct. In our opinion, it's a new build. You might as well call it what it is. Um, and a correction on the Glen Ave, the side that the thirty-four, thirty-six is located on is all two families, but the opposite side of Glen Ave is all single families. Um, and then I believe that this would be setting a precedent for more developers to enlarge the, all of the rest of the two families on that same side of Glen as those lots are much larger than ours on Kimball. Um, and then I'm very concerned about the traffic with this new driveway, and I'll, I'll tell you, I didn't put this in my letter. But we have, as much as, uh, I know that Glen Ave experiences this as well. When people come off Mystic Street, they come roaring down the street, thinking that they can get through to the Mystic Valley Parkway. I think most of it is the Waze, um, GPS system that brings them down here. We have lots of small children. Um, they're constantly turning around down at the end of the road, which the town has not allowed us to put up a no outlet sign because they're saying it's a public road, and there is an outlet. Well, there is no outlet unless they were gonna go up that paper pass, which they can't. Um, so I'm really concerned about people coming down and turning around, and if they see now that there's a paved road that goes to Glen, they're, they're gonna use it. Um, so that's a very big concern of mine. And then also, we would like, Ben and I, we have many trees that are behind our house that, but, um, that they're on our property.
Yeah, I can talk about this. So, um, this is. So, um, this is James D'Amico, uh, hello Chairman. So we have five or six. Um, wild cherry trees and one elderberry tree. Calipers of like the diameter of a basketball. And the limbs are all growing normal and. Um, healthy. But some of them are going over the chain link fence into this yard that is full of grass. It's just a big grass yard. And so I've reached out to the, um. Uh, tree warden, uh, he hasn't called me back yet, but if anyone. Is going to prune these things or cut the limbs down to make their space bigger, could harm the health of the tree. And we contribute to a lot of greenery down at the end of Kimball with that row of trees, as seen from the drone picture up above. And these trees, I think, are growing quickly and large because of an underground brook. That's running in this typography they, at the bottom of this valley. Ms. Mahoney was talking about the severe pitch. Because this, and I don't know if the town has done a study as to how deep that is and. What will happen to that flow of water if it hits a new basement foundation. Um, going down into. Um. Which and Marines address at.
Forty-one.
Forty-one Kimball. Which is, um, very close to the end of that property.
And Daniels.
And Daniels. And, yeah.
Yeah, and that, and that, and just one more quick comment and then, um, we'll let someone else speak, but, uh, that was another question of mine, like how, how does this affect the water table? None of us, I put in my letter that I wrote to the town. None of us, the last three houses have some pumps and so we don't want to have some pumps at all either. So, you know, just a curiosity.
We don't get water.
How, yeah, none of us get water. And thank you so much for letting us speak.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Um, next on our list is, um.
If I could respond to that question?
Um. So join, uh, which, which in particular?
Uh, the trees and.
Sure.
Yeah, so the trees, uh. Sorry, didn't get your name, but Julie, uh, I think your, your icon was highlighted. No plans to trim the trees, uh, that are, um. The limbs that are overhanging the fence, I think, you know, we can collaborate on that. That's not a. An issue. I think in terms of the water table, I think in the elevations Leslie showed, um. The, the new basement or foundation of the addition, uh, isn't going very deep into the ground because. Right from that back right corner is where the elevation is just dropped dramatically. Um, so not too much earth moving around there.
Thank you.
And, and all of that would be evaluated properly.
Uh, next I have Francine Mearon.
Um, hi, this is Francine. Um, I live at twenty Farrington Street. Um, I agree with, um, David Brooks very much so, especially with the water and the flooding of that area. I also agree with Julie. Um, I do want to maintain that Emerson Road is a pathway that. All of me, myself and neighbors use all the time. It was used as a road. Um, which I believe stopped, um, I'd say maybe a year ago when it really started getting torn up again. Um. Uh, but before that. An occasional car would go down it, but it was not used as all the other roads around, um, this area. I'm deeply disappointed that something more couldn't be done to the structure already. Um, that's there, um, making it more of a two condo unit if they wanted to, um. It seems like every green space is getting consumed by housing. Um. And, you know, we all know that these are going to be. Priced very high, um, not rentals, which that was a rental place. And, um, more and more of Arlington is becoming. Really unaffordable. Um, I'd just like to throw that into. Um, thank you. That's what I have to say.
Great. Well, thank you so much for being here. Um, next I have Winell Evans.
Thank you very much. Winell Evans Orchard Place. Um, I just have one quick comment about the tree in front of the house. If I understood Ms. Mahoney correctly. She, um, seemed to say that it was on the property. And I just want to point out that it is not on the property. That is a street tree, which is owned by the town of Arlington. So it cannot be cut down without a hearing and it must be protected, both the, both the part above ground. And also the root system must be protected during construction. So that, um, that will likely be right in the path for, for whatever, um. Uh, large vehicles machinery is going to be going in there. So just to note that that is not the, that tree does not belong to the property.
Yeah, that's understood and it's in front of the house, so it's not in the way of anything. It's in a very good location, actually.
I, I'm going to respectfully disagree with you there because I have seen street trees obliterated in front of houses, drive down Web Cowat Road and Mystic Lake Road. And you will see how trees have been lost to construction. So respectfully. Um, so, but I will appreciate your attention to the ongoing health of that tree. Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Was there anything further? Are there any other members of the public who wish to address the board? Um. I see Francine Mearon has her hand up, but I think that might have been up from before.
Yes, that's up from before. Sorry about that.
Nope, no worries. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address this application? So seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment. Period for this, uh, for tonight's hearing on this matter. Uh, the board will now discuss. Um. The new information and, uh, decide how to proceed. So, um.
Here's a question, just a question, you know, the. Purchase the house, that road leads to our garage. And so. Um, if you could just kindly let me know the next steps in understanding how we could access. The road to the garage and if it is a paper street or what category it falls under.
Okay. Um. So what we, what the board has before, this is an application, uh, for special permit under large addition, um, which is allowed under our. Our zoning bylaw, if you have an addition that's greater than seven hundred fifty square feet, um, it requires a special permit from the board and I. Uh, discussed at the beginning what the special requirements are and what the findings the board needs to make. Um. There were a number of things that were raised, a number of topics that were raised, um, as a part of this conversation and, um. Are things that. Uh. I think the board, there are a couple of things I, as a board, I think we need to investigate. There's a couple of things that I think the. Uh, it would be good for the applicant to, um. To consider. Um. As we go forward, um. The. So the big things that I would ask the, the members of the board to, to chime in here as well, um. But it's the first big thing we, is we need to figure out exactly what the status of Emerson is. Um. Obviously, the existing garage goes out onto it, so it was intended that it would be used, um. For, for access to a garage, uh, so this wouldn't really change that, but we don't really know what the status is. Um, and who would own it? If it is a private way, uh, private ways are main, to being maintained by the abutting neighbors, um. In this case, unfortunately, the DCR is, would be one of the abutters and I do not see them putting much effort into repairing the road. Uh, so most of that would, most of the responsibility would then fall on the applicant, which the applicant has said they would be, uh, willing to do on the portion that abuts their property. Um, and then long-term maintenance would, would remain, my understanding, uh, was that long-term maintenance would remain with the. Uh, the property owner, the town would not take over, uh, the street would not take up responsibility for the street unless the street was redeveloped to modern street standards, which would be. Um. Given the, the right of way that's available there, I don't think it could be accomplished, accomplished. Um. But we do need to determine exactly what's going on with that street. Um. I think it would be good to have the, Ms. Mahoney, if you could, uh, work up, uh, precise figures on, uh, what the changes to the impervious area are. Uh, just so we have those definitively. Um, and especially if the new driveway is going to be made pervious, we would want to. Make sure that that's indicated in the drawing so that we have that as a, as a permanent part of the record. Um. There were some, uh, some questions about the. Um, about the trees and the, the tree maintenance, um, the board can certainly. Encourage the. You know, the abutting neighbors to, to work together, um, on maintenance of, of trees and such along the property line. It's not something that the, the board can really. Um. Include in the decision to sort of indicate that you have to maintain trees or whatever, um, that falls under, under state law. Um, is my understanding and. Um. Then there were, the, I do want to have a conversation also with the town engineer, uh, regarding. Um, the stormwater. And sewer system. I think those would be. As I was mentioned by a few people that that's a. That is an issue for us to address. Um. Members of board, were there other items that you, that we wanted to? Better get some clarity on?
Um, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Blank.
Um. One thing is the driveway width. The driveway looks pretty wide, uh, looks above the. Um, permitted distance. So if we could just get a dimension on that. And that the applicant double check the. Required dimensions of the driveway. Um, I guess also wanted to. Discuss with, with the board going back to the. Shared wall area.
Right.
Felt that. The area that we currently have meets the definition of, um. Of that, just bring up a quick reminder. Substantial. Um. So a building containing two dwelling units joined side by side or front to back sharing a common wall for a substantial. For all or substantially all of its height and depth. Um. And if it's possible to. Have them, have the applicant look at pulling in. The unit two closer to the front of the property. To create more of a shared wall if we, if we feel that. The way it's currently arranged doesn't meet the definition.
Are you asking me, could we do that?
Yeah, would it be possible to? Where the, where the bylaws specifically has terms about, um. The extent to which the. The two units have to share a wall.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Is it possible to? Increase. The percentage of the walls that are. Uh, that are shared of, of that wall, of that shared wall, just increasing the percentage on that so that it, um. It would be more in keeping with what the, the bylaw intends.
We could, yeah. Yeah, I just didn't want to impact the. Open space, the usable open space that's in front of it. Because as soon as I pull it forward, we're going to lose some of that usable open space.
Mm-hmm.
The flat area.
Right. But yeah, if you could look into what. What might work in terms of the. Um, making sure that, that, uh.
Is substantially, do you think eighty percent would be substantial?
I don't think the board has ever put a number on what substantial means.
Right. More substantial than it is now.
More substantial than it is now, yes. Um, obviously, and you're also sort of tied in a little bit because of the, the setbacks, um.
Right.
Sure we're not. And, um, and one of the things we would be doing in terms of. Uh, if Emerson turns out to be a public way, then it, it is a front yard. Um. And then. Uh, the other two sides, one would be a rear yard and one would be a side yard. So. Um, obviously the side yard, I think, would be the one that goes along Glen. And the rear yard would be the one that. Goes towards Kimball. Um. But the front yard.
I'm counting it as a front yard now.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, and so did the surveyor.
Okay.
I guess, in, in, in term, sorry, Justin, I know you guys can't put a number on it, um. What do you guys value more, the open usable space or the? Um.
Or are you planning to maintain that retaining wall?
No, the retaining wall needs to get, um, changed.
Okay.
But yeah, I mean, Jack has a good question, which is. Which is more important, you know, the, the usable open space or the shared wall?
Well, currently, so. I think from just a. A strict legalistic reading of the bylaw, um. If there's not a substantial connection between the two structures, then. It's not a duplex, um, whereas you currently have zero usable open space. And so. You know, if you have no usable open space now and you have no usable open space at the end. Um. While technically you are. We say a greater degree of zero, um. But that is something that, that would be reviewed under as a, a special permit condition, um. But because there's a lot of properties in Arlington that have no usable open space, um. And we'll do additions that will also have no usable open space, but the, the board will need to. Uh, determine that it is not substantially more detrimental to. To maintain that existing condition. So, um. If the building, if the building as proposed doesn't meet the definition for a duplex, then. I think that's more of a, more of an issue than if. The usable open space is less than might be.
Okay. Yep.
Go ahead and stop the share. Um. Okay, so on my list I have looking into the provenance of Emerson Street. Uh, discussing with the engineer, the stormwater and sewer system questions. Um. Asking the applicants to take a look at the width of the driveway. Um. Trying to. Increase the extent of the shared wall between the two units. Um. And then related to the Emerson Street question is the question of what, what is the actual frontage? Is it just Glen or does it also include Emerson? Are there other questions that, um. Board would want to. Uh, consider?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just on that last point, um. We, we, we want to give them the option to give some precedent to us on substantially all if. If as a, if there's alternative that substantially, I know we haven't defined it, but.
Yeah.
Um, if they find some precedent that would give us some guidance and would help them, just so they have, just so they have some options and then maybe we get some more input on what seems to be kind of a. Unclear term.
Right. Um. To the wa, the ones I can think of off the top of my head, um, we had mentioned Franklin Street was one, um, the applicant mentioned that as well. Um. There was one on, I'll say Park Street. I think in the past, there's, there was one, uh, many of those are sort of front to back duplexes rather than side by side duplexes. Um. I remember a long time ago, there was a case on Russell. Um, that involved a breezeway, but I don't recall. Cause it was like eight, ten years ago. I don't remember exactly how that finished out. Um.
You know how long ago Park Street was?
Park Street is probably, it was pre-COVID, um.
Okay. There's something on Appleton Street?
Um. Yes. My mind gets fuzzy on these ones because there's so many.
Okay, we'll try to find. Precedent.
Okay. Okay. So given all that, I think it would be good if we could go ahead and continue the hearing. Is there? What would make sense for you in terms of? Coming back?
Uh, when is the next meeting?
So we are, the next two are. June twenty fourth and July eighth.
Well, let's shoot for June twenty fourth.
Sir Austin, does that, does June twenty fourth have space?
Yep, there's only two on there currently.
Perfect. Okay, are there, is there anything else that the board would want to have looked at ahead of that? Continuation? Seeing none, I will go ahead and move that the zoning Board of Appeals for the Town of Arlington. Continue public hearing for docket three eight five two thirty six Glen Avenue to Tuesday, June twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five at seven thirty P M. Samster DuPont, thank you. So roll call vote of the board, Mister DuPont? Mister Holly?
Yes.
Mister Little Blank?
Yes.
Mister Branowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes, yes, we are continued on Glen Avenue. Thank you all very much for for being here this evening.
Great, thank you.
With that. Going back to our agenda. See, Mister Hanlon is with us, so we will proceed with item four on our agenda, which is docket three eight. Three six one oh three Thorndike Street. So, Mister Alphen, if you could go ahead and. Bring us up to speed.
Yes, thank you, Mister Chairman. For the record, attorney Christopher Alphen, Blatman, Babrowski, Haverdy and Silverstein. I I just before I begin, I just want to thank the board's patience with us. I know it's sort of three, three. Three meetings or four meetings for one single family is sort of excessive, so I I appreciate the board's time on this. If you recall, the last discussion we had was the variance for the lot coverage, the board was. Uh, in the opinion that we didn't meet the strict legal requirements. For variance, which was a a reasonable take by the board. So I had a conversation with our team and I said, you know. We have to deal with this lot coverage and one of the engineers said, well, is the driveway area part of the. Uh, lot coverage calculation? And I said, normally it is, uh, but let me check in. With the building commissioner because there was nothing in the zoning bylaw that was specific about it. So I emailed the building commissioner and said, is the driveway area part of the. Lot coverage calculations? And he said it is not. Therefore, we updated our plans. And now we have a zoning table, which our lot coverage is no longer nonconforming, and therefore we no longer need a variance. For a lot coverage. We've provided updated engineering plans and architectural plans with zoning tables that. Uh, show that the lot coverage is in conformance. So that leaves us with essentially the same project. But we are only seeking a special permit for a reconstruction of a legal preexisting nonconforming structure. And a variance for a three point five stories when two point five stories are permitted in the zoning district. And if you recall, the reason why we need that variance. Uh, is because there is an extra story which would normally be. Considered not a story in their basement, because it's so much above grade, it's considered a story. So it was our argument and I I've asked one more time for the board's input on this. It's our interpretation that because of the soil conditions of being in the FEMA. Uh, area and because of the uniqueness of the project and the fact that we are not exceeding the height limit. And we are only just a little bit above grade, that in this instance, a variance would be appropriate. Uh, for for three point five stories when two point five stories are permitted. And that's the only variance we need and then the special permit for a preexisting nonconforming structure, just to illustrate that point. Just so the board totally understands the need for the variance and how close we are to compliance, but for just a little bit over above grade. I want to call in our engineer architect to show you a a diagram. Of of the stories. Alan, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Alan, do you want to share your screen? That might be easiest if you have the diagram or I have the things I can pull up right here. Just tell me.
Mister Austin, if you go ahead and give Mister Yu permission to share.
So good evening, the chair and the board, and thank you, Chris, for for. Uh, you know, for the introduction and new layout, you know, what we are currently facing right now. So. My name is Alan Yu, I'm the architect and I'm also one of the owners for the property. So we, as well, we discussed about four weeks ago, like in our last meeting, we were facing, you know. Uh, the FEMA, you know, you know, flood plan and we were kind of forced to set our first floor of one foot above the flood plan. Uh, which uh, set our first floor, um, five feet above, uh, the average grade around house. Um, and and as a result, our basement is now being counted as a one level. Um, so our current, you know, proposed structure is now three point five levels in in, you know, in, you know. Uh, compared to your two point five levels. So we kind of prepare a a diagram, um, and trying to help the board, um, you know, with the. The discussion and, you know, what it actually means. So if you look at this, imagine you are standing right. On a street looking at a, you know, a property where the very thick line represents the. The front, uh, the grid at the front, right, where your entry will be. The 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 thing red line is the flood plan, which is set as current, you know, a a seven feet of elevation. Because our our site slopes towards the rare side significantly, so which kind of drop our average grade. Lower to to be at three feet. So, so there are a few things, right? One is when we, um, in Arlington, we're allowed to build a house up to thirty five feet. But if you really looking at our house, our house is is really only thirty two. Ten above the grid when you sit on the street, because our average grade is much lower, actually, it's actually very. Underground, imagine a line, if you look at that dashed black line. So, um, and the first floor. Need to be one foot above the the flood plan. That sets, so which sets at eight foot. So if you look at the dimension, it's currently, the first floor is five feet above the average grade, which is a three. Uh, at Arlington, you know, if the first floor is. More than four feet, six inches above the average grade, it would count as a as a story. I do have another diagram, which I also want to talk about, you know. If I move this through right. This is exactly the same house with the same envelope, same height. And I just dropped. My first floor to seven for six. In this case. We are meeting the four for six maximum distance from the first level to the average grade. This is a compliant. Building massing. It complies the height of, you know, high restrictions and all the 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 store requirements. If I zoom out. They're they're so from the building envelope wise, they're exactly the same house. It's just because we we were, we are forced to buy FEMA. To raise our floor to be additional six inches. And and made us to, you know, we have to count our building, which is same massing again, to be three point five levels. Instead of two point five levels. So we 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 kind of prepares diagram and trying to help with the discussion and understanding our, you know. About our situations here. So we're just six inches away from being counted two point five levels. Well, again, the massing is exactly the same. And in fact, if you look, if you're standing at. The street, you know, if if the site is a is a quite flat site. This high, I mean, the massing could even be higher, right? So because we're sloped towards the back pretty significantly. Our house is only thirty two feet and ten just off the, I mean, the grid at street. So facing the challenges, you know, we want to ask once, you know, once again, you know. Uh, you know, to the board for your consideration on this matter, and thank you.
Thank Mister Yu. Go ahead and stop the share on that. So otherwise, there's no changes to the. The the plans, it's really, it's just the. More closely aligning with what the with what lot coverage means, which. To be honest with you, we discussed at town meeting not four weeks ago, so. Next time you go looking at the bylaw, it will be addressed. But. Understand the change in the calculation. So the building cover, lot coverage is the same as building coverage, so it's whatever the footprint of the building is. Divided by the the area of the lot. So you have a revised figure for that, which is less than the thirty five percent maximum that is allowed by code.
Correct.
Okay. So as you knows, there's the two other questions. So one that we haven't spent much time talking about recently. Is the the special permit for the reconstruction, so. The intent here is to. Demolish the building and then come back and build something new, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. So I. Know in town, the building commissioner has always taken the. The opinion that if you demolish. The house on a nonconforming lot. You vacate the ability to re to. Redevelop the lot. And I understand you are. Saying that that's that. In fact, that's not the case, that reconstruction is allowed. And so I just would like to delve a little bit into your understanding of sort of what. Reconstruction would mean in this sense where. And particularly in terms of what's going to be on the site is significantly different than what's on the site currently.
Yeah, it's so under forty eight, section six, which your bylaw repeats. Included there is protection of preexisting nonconforming structures. And a lot of times you'll see special permits where you're making modifications, you're making. You know, additions that don't create any additional nonconformities. But including that is the ability to reconstruct, and it does not need to be the same structure. The question is, does it create any more additional nonconformings? Uh, than there was there, and in our instance, there is one, and that's why we're asking for the variance, but otherwise. We are not creating any additional nonconformities what's there. Because you tear down a structure on the lot, you do not lose your protection under forty eight, section six. Under, uh, unless there's an abandonment of two years, so if a house. Uh, if you tear down a house by demolition or even by, uh, by natural disaster. You cannot rebuild if there's been no rebuild within two years. Uh, but we're asking for the special permit ahead of time, and then we would demolish and then rebuild. Reconstruction is protected under the bylaw and under forty eight, section six. You know, certainly if this board doesn't feel comfortable with that interpretation without the building commissioners. You know, okay, we're going to be. You know, a a special permit still needs to get reviewed by the building commissioner. And if something is incorrect or wrong in that decision, then certainly the building commissioner can impine at that point in time. Uh, but I haven't heard anything from him saying that this would not be permitted, so that would be news to me.
Okay, and I wasn't sure, I, if you had, we do have a provision. In our bylaw, five four two B eight. Which. Allows construction on an undersized lot. As long as the proposed foundation meets certain requirements. And I wasn't, and I know that when that was passed at town meeting, it was done, um, because there was this concern about. The inability to fully demolish a building on a lot and reconstruct. Uh, so I was curious if you had looked at that. Section of the bylaw. Um, and whether. You thought that might be applicable in this case.
Section five.
Five four two. B eight, uh, which I. Believe is page five dash nineteen. The minimum frontage and lot area requirement shall not apply to homes constructed. To the lower of either a hers score of forty four or maximum allowed her score defined in the. I E C C as adopted and amended by Massachusetts. And the new structure was built within the existing foundation footprint or. With an addition that is not a large addition as defined. Or by special permit. So if the. So I'm not sure what hers score the building is aiming to achieve.
I mean, my assumption is that's protection of preexisting nonconforming lots that are vacant. And. You know, I wouldn't ever. I'm trying to find the this section, but I wouldn't ever say. If a if a client has a preexisting nonconforming structure, I wouldn't be considering. Any sort of bylaw, whether under the statute or under the bylaw to. Build on a legal, nonconforming lot.
Okay.
Because the structure is going to provide. The developer with more protection than any bylaw or statute is going to protect. So. But certainly. Happy to take a look at that, if that's going to make a difference for the board.
Mister Hanlon.
Somebody who on town meeting has something to do with that. Section, it A assumed. That the town would continue taking the narrow position on. What a reconstruction is that it had done in previous cases and that the you the chair just described with the building commissioner. The difficulty is that that generally, the position that the town has taken, provided. A disincentive to replace foundations. And the foundation is one of the weakest and most energy inefficient part of the house, so that. Building a new house basically on an old foundation. Uh, was essentially undermining the town's goals. So energy goals and and. Uh, climate change goals. So the purpose of this, which was sponsored by the the Clean Energy Futures Committee. Was essentially to deal exclusively, really, with non. With with lots that already had something on it and that there was some kind of a thing which was arguably a reconstruction. At the time this was adopted. Uh, her score of forty four was was, you know, at least something that required a little bit of a stretch. Since then, the town has, uh, has adhered to the stretch code and is one of the. The fossil fuel bylaw ta- devastation communities. And I understand from the building commissioner that almost everything that is a new construction. Does in fact beat that because you can't beat the building code and not beat this, so that. Uh, the building commissioner was not particularly worried about. Uh, the difficulty that the special permit request was, I think. Aimed at. So I I just leave it at this, that if as you go, as you, if you look at it. You should keep in mind that it was intended to deal with already improved properties. I'm pretty sure now, maybe there are peculiarities in the way language works together and Mister Alphen will understand those. Those pretty well, but at least it's the understanding of the building commissioner that as a practical matter, any new construction in Arlington is going to meet the requirements of. Be eight and the second sentence, the second bullet there. Says by special permit, so that at least arguably is yet again. Something that authorizes a special permit, uh, if you don't meet the first requirement where you. What you have is a small addition, so. You might look there because, you know. I think the board historically would regard a a claim that you meet. I think the board historically would regard a claim that you meet that may be eight. It poses much less cognitive dissonance than trying to deal with the question that we've dealt with, or pretty consistent on taking a narrow view of reconstruction.
Okay, I, I, we're, we're happy to take a look at that, I guess. For the time being, we, we certainly don't want to have this conversation keep going back and forth. And I guess, does the board have any issues if they so granting a special permit for this particular project and or granting a variance if we so require one?
I mean, I think in terms of the, we would need to, I think, discuss more fully the, what the findings that would need to be made. But we can certainly delve into those this evening and make sure that the board understands where it stands and understands where we're, where opinions lie before the, before we close this evening. Are there other questions or comments from the board in regards to this application?
I wonder if Mr., Mr. Ethan can explain on the way in which, when, when, when you're inviting us to make a section six determination about, with respect to the special permit. What exactly is the non-conformity? What, what exactly is the comparison you're asking us to make? What is the non-conformity in the structure that, that you are saying that what you do, what this does is not going to be worse, presumably to a worse thing than the, what, what already exists. Building, is this building better than that building? I wanted to sort of get down to on exactly what the non-conformity is that you're concerned about.
Yeah, so I, I, I believe the non-conformity is, I have to go back to my notes, is, is area and frontage and some setbacks. And if you recall correctly, we are eliminating some existing non-conformities, including the setback non-conformity. But the question is, is the reconstruction alteration, change in a pre-existing non-conforming structure substantially more detrimental than what is there exist, what is there today? That's, that's the section six test. And we would argue that because of the location of the area, it's only having one a butter, and that Noah Butters have opposed the project, and that it takes a deteriorated existing structure and recreate something that fits better with the neighborhood and looks more pleasing is not more substantially detrimental than what is there existing. So what it is, is the relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially, oh, I'm serious, excuse me, I'm reading. Good for you for catching that. But let me find section six. Sorry, isn't one of my previous.
No, I think, I mean, section six is predominantly the substantially more detrimental question.
Correct. Provided that no extension or alteration shall be permitted unless there is a fi, a finding by the permit granting authority or by a special print, permit granting authority designated by the bylaw that such change, extension or alteration shall not be more substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood.
Other questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just, just a comment. I was actually walking by the property on Sunday night, and I heard a large, loud crash, and the tree in the park behind the property has fallen onto the property. So I'm not sure whether applicant's aware of that, but if you're not, it's, it's worth checking out. It's relevant to the application in a broad sense of relevance, but not pertinent to our inquiry. I just figured I would be a good citizen.
Thank you so much. We are, we're actually not quite aware of that. We do regular, you know, routine check up on a house. It, it is not in great condition. We're, we're, you know, we're aware of that, but thank you so much for the information. We'll definitely check it out very soon. Yeah, thank you.
Anything else from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Dupont.
So I wanted to go back. It's not specific, it's not about the special permit. I just was listening to Mr. Yu when he was showing us those diagrams, and he used the phrase that they were forced by FEMA to go from seven point six feet to eight feet. And I, I'm just curious, is that forced by FEMA by virtue of an actual regulation or a requirement? Or is, or is he just saying that it's forced by the circumstances as they exist with the floodplain?
Mr. Yu, can you address that?
Yeah, so we actually had talked to our civil engineer, you know, Chris and I, we actually asked the exact same question, and we wanted you to list that the, so we want, want him to provide us with a list of regulations. I believe I did. I, I'm happy to submit that after this meeting or, you know, you know, to the board. I believe, Sir Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, I think he did send a bunch of.
Yep, and it's in my May memo as a footnote of what the FEMA regulations specifically are required in order to have that basement be located there.
So, and, and did I hear you correctly, though, in saying that if you were able to build at the seven point six foot height, you wouldn't need a variance?
Correct. So the, so the current is only bylaw, the, the, the definition for basement, it would be the first level elevation cannot be, cannot exceed four foot six above the average grade. Which we confirmed that with the building commissioner. So, yeah, so if we could, we would actually build our first level lower because currently our first level is much elevated, more than we want it to be. But in order to meet FEMA requirements, we have it set at elevation eight because our flood elevation is at seven. We have to be a foot higher.
I see, because it, it sounds to me like you're saying that the four point six, so you're talking about average grade being three feet?
Correct, and which is certified also by the, the seven year, correct, yes.
So the fourth, the seven point six is adding the, the, the seven point six is adding four point six plus the.
Which, yeah, which is the maximum we can go for, in, in order for the basement not to be counted as one floor in Arlington. I do want to add that actually, the international building code, the requirement is six feet, and as with most towns. And just, Arlington is a little bit strict on, you know, more strict on that. So we have four for six here, so.
Essentially, the, so I'm sorry, just a last question. So the eight feet really is as a result of FEMA.
That's the only result. Actually, before this hearing, I, I called our, our senior again and confirmed that, you know, again, correct. So, and this is also aligned with my experience on other projects, you know, some larger scale projects as well. We have to be at least a foot higher above the flood, the floodplain.
Thank you.
Mr. Holly, did you have a question?
I was just, by the definition of the basement, it's, you know, it's to the ceiling is four foot six inches, not the level, though.
Let me put, yeah, okay.
A basement shall be deemed a story when its ceiling is four foot six inches or more above the finish grade.
You might be correct.
It's on page two twenty one of the definitions.
Right now. Four foot six, basement, ground floor. Yeah, measured from the, from finished floor to finished ceiling above the average grade, finished grade, the ground joint in the building. Basement shall be deemed a story, ceilings will be, oh, so, yeah, I actually missed that. So that will add another ten inches, ten, twelve inches to, so basically, if I may look at my diagram, we are the ceiling. Yeah, so that, if that's the case, we actually, we comply, right?
Right, because you're higher than.
That's actually good news. Yeah, because we kind of, you know, typically, we use the top of the first floor. Yeah, that's actually. Thank you. So typically, we have two by tens or two by twelves for the floor thickness for the first level, and, and that will can easily take out, you know, you know, ten, ten inches minimum to the bottom structure. If that's the case, I believe we are, we're now in compliance.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just. I didn't, finishing up, I mean, we typically try to get out of having to issue variances if there's another solution. And so I, I guess what I'm asking is, is this, is, does this get us out of that position of having to consider a variance based upon the fact that we think there's no compliance?
What, what do you think, Alan? Is, is, is it possible that we may comply or maybe one little shift? And then we don't need the variance altogether?
Yes, I'm, I'm quite confident because currently we are, our first elevation is at eight, eight feet. And, Andy, I believe we had our first floor framing at two, two by twelves that, you know, that can easily take out at least ten and a quarter, you know, eleven and a quarter inches. So that will put us in compliance. Because we're currently only six inches over. And if we, you know, deduct the thickness of floor, we are actually in compliance.
On, on the building height, Mr. Chair, sorry, I just. On the building height side of things, right? Meaning the number of stories wise, the com, the compliance you're saying, Alan.
So, in, in terms of the building height, I think we, we are, we have been in compliance. We, we have on the, the, the tip of our roof ridge to the average grade, we have been showing thirty four feet, ten inches, which is two, two inches in a lower than the requirement. And, and now if we, so like I said, because we were, our first floor was kind of driven to be higher. If, you know, we actually can make the building even slightly smaller, if we need to be now, you know, with a lower first floor, so.
If I may, Mr. Chair, the, so, so instead of it being three and a half stories, it is back to being two and a half stories? Is that understanding correct? Because basement is not considered a story now?
Yeah, so just the rough numbers I was running, so if it's eight, ten to the top of the first floor, figure an inch and a half to the top of the, top of the floor joist, eleven and a quarter inch joist for a two by twelve, then furring and jip on the underside, it's a fourteen inch assembly. So that gets you down to six foot ten for the elevation of the ceiling. And then if three foot is the average grade, you're at three ten. So even if you take a little bit, you know, you've got plenty of extra eight inches of, of slop space in there. So it would, assuming that the three foot average grade is correct, then no, it would not be. The basement level would, the, would not be a basement level. It would be a cellar and not a basement, and therefore not a story.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Blank.
I do want to just point out that on the drawings that we have for us, that the first floor level is listed at nine foot six. Versus, we've been talking about eight feet. So I think we're just gonna have to make a, a condition as part of it to make sure that that gets corrected as part of it, so that it doesn't kick off any changes.
I believe that's accurate. I think these plans just got updated the last couple hours.
Yeah, so if we're talking about it being at eight feet, then that's fine, but it's just, we need to make sure we cover it in the decision, because the drawings we have show nine foot six.
Yes, I'm just opening the set that's dated. Six, nine. My section.
While you're looking for that, I just wanted to mention, the board member had asked about what the non-conformities are. It's area and frontage, we don't have sufficient of. And we actually are eliminating pre-existing non-conformities related to setback, but the non-conformity that we're increasing is the gross floor area. So that's the reason for the special permit. In fact, if we could build something that met all the requirements, then, then we would actually be able to do it by right, if we figured out this story issue, in my, in my legal opinion. But regardless, we're here for a special permit on forty eight, section six, and section five four two of the zoning by law.
So, yeah, so the plans that were submitted today definitely indicate that level one is at elevation nine foot six with a floodplain at seven foot zero.
And Alan, were those just updated tonight? Oh, you're on mute, you're, you're on mute.
So, yeah, yeah, those are just updated, you know, a couple hours ago, you know, before the hearing. So there was error in our drawing. So currently, we are setting our first level at eight foot. Which, let me confirm that once, one more time. I'm putting my drawings on my computer real quick. So our basement level is, yeah, so, yeah, so we are happy to update the set and, and then send it for, for record, and then make sure, you know, our, our, our basement, you know, you know, meet the requirements definition for basement, you know, you know, a definition of bylaw. We do that.
Yeah, I think we'll just have to do it as a condition, because if we close, can't take any more information from you.
Yeah, and that's, that's totally acceptable to do it as a condition.
Mr. Chair. The illustration that were presented tonight, I assume were not submitted already to the board. I, I don't see it on the, on the newest, but could we add a, a, a condition for submission of those as well?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Just, yeah, the only question I had, so on the drawing set that we have today, where the, the top elevation is listed as thirty seven foot ten, and the first floor level is listed as nine foot six, does the, by reducing the elevation of level one by one and a half feet, does that also reduce the seventeen, the thirty seven foot ten down to thirty six foot four?
I'm happy to answer that. So we're gonna have to look at our stair arrangement. If possible, probably wanna prefer to have a higher sitting height for a, a, you know, better living, you know, environment, but we're gonna evaluate that as a whole, you know, we're gonna view that. We certainly will not be increasing that, but yeah, possibly we can reduce that a little bit.
Other questions or comments for the board at this time?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
If Mr. Ethan could just explain a little more what he means by increasing gross floor area. Usually, where non-conformities come up there, it's because increasing the gross floor area decreases usable open space, or it might violate an F A R requirement or something like that. I don't, don't recall any, a, Uh, violate an F A R requirement or something like that, um, I don't, don't recall any, a, um, a, um. Anything that it was previously indicated as a non-conformity in just gross floor area as such, and I wonder if Mr. Even could just explain a little more what he means.
Yeah, so there's, there's no, um, non-conformity being created. Uh, but because we are increasing the gross floor area calculation. And you can see that not on our zoning table, that we would comply with everything. Uh, but because we're increasing that, um, that issue, then do we, then there's a requirement for a special permit, I'm just taking a look at our. Um, zoning table right now to see exactly what we're looking at here.
Yeah, I, I don't recall there's a F A R requirements on this particular site, so, um, increasing the square footage may not, um, be considered as increasing non, non-conformity.
Right, we're not increasing a non-conformity, right?
It seems to me that the, I mean, if that's true, and you probably should do that, but I'm not aware of what. Of any place where there was an existing non-conformity that is being increased.
There isn't.
And so that only, that, that means the only difficulty you have is the lot size, eh. Is, is the, you know, the lot size and the frontage, I, I, I'm guessing frontage, I don't, didn't verify that, um, so. Again, and we, we, to get back to where we were doing before on where, on how easy it is to give us a special permit. If it's only a question of lot size and frontage, uh, uh, then. Assuming that you meet the requirements for energy conservation, you should easily be able to get a special permit based on that. Um, and so you might wanna, it would be much less controversial for us to choose that way of going about it and to be forced to. Reconsider our, the question about reconsideration, which is something that would probably. Cause at least two or three, two weeks per month of delay as we work through this with town council and, and. It's not easy for us to suddenly change years of, eh, years of precedent and we'd much rather not do it if we have another way to the same result.
I, 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 I mean, I, I mean, if that's the board's position, that's the board's position and we can certainly take a look at that, but, uh, you know, I. The protection under the statute and what case law has said is that reconstruction is protected under forty-eight, six and six, I think the word is actually in the statute itself.
It, it definitely is, the question is what, what exactly is meant by that, and there's some cases one way or, and, and the other. So I, I get it, I understand what your position would be, I, we've been through this before with other applicants. So it's not like this is a case of first impression for us.
Yeah.
Uh, so you're, we're basically being asked to overturn quite a long amount of special, of practice and precedent in our own decisions. And if you don't need it, then I don't see why we should take that approach.
Okay. Um, yeah, and I think, just to back up, I think what I was saying as far as the need for. The special permit is that although we're not creating any more non-conformities, we are adding square footage. Uh, and so we're not creating any existing non-conformities, we're not expanding any existing non-conformities. Uh, but because we're adding square footage of area, uh, there's an argument that you needed special permit under special permit. Uh, under forty-eight, six and six in your bylaw, but putting aside that to. The question about whether we're protecting under reconstruction, uh, if it's the board's position that they don't feel comfortable issuing a special permit. Um, certainly, we can take that under advisement and put some thought into it, but, um.
I am feel pretty, I do feel much, much, I do believe that. I mean, I think that when you look at it, you will discover that you're going to meet the first requirements that are in B eight. And that it will be easy for us to grant that permit.
Okay.
That at least is the view the building inspector takes of it.
Okay. I'd have to review that, I don't, I don't feel comfortable making that determination tonight, um. Because I, I just wanna make sure that I'm not losing my client's rights without reviewing that specifically, so. I'm happy to, um, you know, give a, a short continuance, just so that we can review that language. Uh, and, and come back with an answer, we're either gonna push the fact that we think that we can get a. Special permit under, under forty-eight, section six, or we'll say that here's another section that we're applying under, um, no harm, no foul.
That would also, I guess, give you an opportunity to take the discussion that we've been having for the last fifteen minutes or so and. Go to Mr. Chapa and make sure that, that if you do what you're planning to do with respect to the other, uh, to the question of, uh. Stories that he agrees with it and that you, and that you're fine on that, cuz that. And it would also pr- probably give you the ability to correct your drawings so that you don't need a condition, all of that would. Make this cleaner, so that when we acted on it, you'd have something that you're sure you could execute on.
Yeah, fair enough, I appreciate.
I, 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 I do wanna add, uh, some information, I, I, I've been in communication with Michael, the building, you know, commissioner since, you know, pro- you know, this project. Uh, probably roughly a year and a half ago, you know, I think he was the one who asked, uh, you know, kind of directed me over to the special permit. I, I, I believe he was citing, uh, we were adding more than seven hundred square feet, right, or six, so there's a number there, certain, uh, when the, the alterations above a certain. Number of square footage, we need to get on a spe- get on a special permit, I, I think I, I, I've actually, um, uh, trying to apply another, you know, you know, section when the. I was trying to avoid this route, but I, it wasn't successful with them, actually, I just wanna, uh, you know, throw the information out there, so, uh, uh, we had a, had a few, eh, conversation about that already.
Okay.
The issue, the issue underneath it, if you read, when you read the H, you'll see that, that you, uh, you have to achieve your energy, your energy goal. And you have to either, uh, be on the building footprint that's already there. Or be less than seven hundred and fifty square feet or be less than what's necessary to qualify for a major addition. That's in one bullet, and then the next bu- bullet is or by special permit. And it's that or by special permit, that is the language that you would hang your, eh, that, that you would hang your hats on in terms of, uh, of. Making this, making this, this work for you, even though it's, even though it would be larger than a larger, large addition. Uh, and I think, I mean, that, so that's where it is in the bylaw, that, that's what you'd have to look at to see that, that you feel comfortable relying on it.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Holly?
I, I, uh, second what Mr. Hanlon is saying, there's more comfort to that, just to go through that section A. You know, that you pointed out earlier, in lieu of what is being proposed, just because. Eh, eh, the, the exact, that was about to voice the same thing is the option two available in that section, he's by special permit, um, a- and. And Mr. Hanlon is right that we, you know, the opt-in specialized stretch code that is enacted is pretty much, you know, is equal and to what. The, the code calls for a, her score of forty-four, again, we're not trying to claim. That at by any means, obviously, the ownership and, you know, their council will have to do the due diligence on that, but. I'd feel more comfortable siding with Mr. Hanlon on this. That it's a clean path for approval sake.
Thank you, Mr. Holly. Um. At this stage, I think the board's position is closer for, but I do think we do need, um. To open the hearing for public comment just briefly this evening, just to make, see if there's any additional, uh, questions in regards to the conversation the board has just had with the applicant before we, um. Um, move on, so with that, uh, I will go ahead and open the, this here for public comment, again, this is, uh, one oh three Thorndike Street. Um, members public who would like to address this application may, uh, click the, uh, raise hand on the react tab or star nine if you're calling in by phone. Are there any members of public who would like to address this application this evening? Mr. Moore?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, Steve Moore, Piedmont Street. Um, I hate to be the fly in the ointment, but, um, I'm going to do it anyway, uh. Uh, I, I understand, um, the attorney's claim of one a butter, but the other a butter is the. All the citizens of the town that use the public fields, um, um, I, I'm wondering if I could first. Ask the question, the, um, particular area that is to the left of the front of the house, looking at the front of the house, which was i- in a chain-linked area. Looks like it's not related to the property, I'm not sure, what's the status of that small strip of land?
So we, we had our land server actually look into that, I think that's, that's a piece of land actually owned by the town, which the town, town never took care of it, that's what I heard. So I think the previous owner actually taken care of it to some extent, so that was, you know, a- after we purchased the property, we had our land server looking to that, um. Uh, it, it's, I think it's, you know, technically, I think by, but, by, but, uh, it's, it's town's land, but it's somehow fenced with trees in there. Uh, we, we actually, after we acquired the property, we never do anything trimming, trimming it down, if everything is the same, eh, eh, you know, as it was. Um, yeah, so, um, I believe the, the previous owner has been taking, taking care of that, you know, somehow.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, thank you then, Mr. Chair, um, there's some significant trees there, um, the building that you're, uh, constructing or wanting to construct here. Is going to require significant working of the land and these trees are all gonna require. Critical root zone protection, even though they're not on your property, their roots definitely are on your property and run right up against where you're going to be. Completely reconstructing the home, so you're gonna have to be, uh, make, make the, the necessary precautions for those trees and their survival. Um, and, and that may have been your intent anyway, uh, which would be great, but. One of the things that came up at the previous hearings that I've not heard addressed at all tonight by any, anyone, and I understand that. There seems to be some significant momentum towards creating a, um, a relatively easy path to approval in the future. Is the design here has not been, uh, varied at all from what was previously presented, where it raised concerns about size. Um, and filling up, you know, now I understand there's all sorts of detail about the height versus number of stories and where, how far above the. Floodplain we are, and I understand all of that, in the end, what we're left with is a design that's. Uh, a very tall, blocky design that will be viewable from pretty much the entire field. Um, that I don't think is necessarily harmonious balance for the rest of the neighborhood as we talked about previously. And as far as I can tell, the applicant has not addressed any changes to that design to ameliorate the, uh, or mitigate the issue relative, uh, to that. Uh, concern, and I just wanted to raise it yet again as something that should be considered in the decision, thank you, Mr. Chan.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Are there other members of public who wish to speak this evening? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment, um. So the three things I had identified that we had wanted, um, to brush up on, uh. For of, a subject we're hearing, number, uh, one would be, um. Just, uh, to review the number of stories calculation that we walked through this evening, uh. Take that to special services and just confirm that they're on board with that interpretation, um. And then update the drawings with the revised elevation, so we have that clean, um. And then to review section five, four, two, B eight, um, in regards to the foundation, just to make sure that that makes sense, um. And then, um, when you submit for the building permit, you will need to do a, a tree plan, it's a part of the, the standard town, um, requirements, so you'll have that, I don't know if. You qualify for the engineering, uh, site water review, but I know you've been through conservation on site water already, so. I'm sure whatever conservation would require would be in excess of whatever the, the town would require under that, um.
And we, so we have actually been talking with him, the, the, the tree ward and.
Oh, you have, okay, good. Um, and we did get the report that, um, you provided by the GeoTech, uh, recommending the use of helical piles, uh, to support the building. Um, due to the nature that most of the fill in this area is, uh, organic and compressible and unsuitable for foundations as the current house demonstrates. Um, so just to confirm that, um, that you are proceeding with helical piles, that's your intent?
Uh, Andy, can you confirm that, uh, so, so, so Andy, uh, Chinese Star Association in here?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, on a job, um. Andy, you're there, um, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Uh, uh, I'm sorry.
You can speak to the fa- foundation, are, are we gonna use helical piles or other?
Yes, yes, we did the, uh, your tapping core report, uh, sorry, uh.
Yeah, so we saw it, yeah, we saw that report, I just wanted to, the recommendation of the GeoTech had been to use helical piles, I just wanted to confirm that you were.
Correct, we're gonna use, uh, helical piles, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, just, just for, for those, I mean, the, the advantage of the helical piles is because they are not pounded into the ground and they're screwed into the ground. The impact, uh, and the, um, you know, the vibrations that are induced in the neighborhood are significantly less than, than driven piles, so.
Correct.
Appreciate the use of the helicals. Um. So with that, um, are there any other questions from the board? Otherwise, I would recommend, I believe that you would, could be ready in two weeks?
Yes, absolutely, I think we just need to review the section, update our plans, um, and just, um. Got our I's crossed our T's here, obviously, we have a clean record before you.
So we'll be looking at June twenty-four. Unless there's any, okay, great, so I will move the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington, continue, public hearing for Doc at three eight, three, six, one oh three Thorndike Street. To Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five at seven thirty P M.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon, so roll call vote of the board to continue, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. Little Blank?
Yes.
Mr. Branowski?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, we are continued on one oh three Thorndike.
Thank you.
Right.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Absolutely. Um, with that, go back to our agenda. Come on, there it goes, uh, so next up is Doc at three eight, five, zero, sixty-seven Foster Street, um. Applicants could go ahead and introduce themselves and tell us what they are proposing to do.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, good evening, members of the board, thank you very much for taking my case this evening.
Absolutely.
I am the, uh, owner of a recently updated, eh, relatively recently updated two family and Foster Street. I'm looking to replace a fence that runs along the backyard. It's a aluminum black fence, uh, with a privacy fence, I did upload a photo with the application, but just. Uh, for convenience sake, in case it's not at your disposal, I'm just gonna hold it up here, I don't know if you can see that well, just to give you an idea of the section that I'm speaking of.
Yep.
So, um. That's about a sixteen foot section running along the back, uh, of the property, incidentally, there's another thirteen feet to the left of that, which I'm not looking for a special permit for. Um, because there's, the sightlines aren't really there, um, I would be looking to replace this with. Uh, a wood, uh, blockade fence, you know, cedar or pressure treated, and I'll probably, you know, paint it or stain it black. Um, incidentally, the other three sections of the yard are also black aluminum with a closed top baluster. So, the reason I, um, am looking for the permit is that. You know, I wanted to put a baluster top on it basically for aesthetic purposes, honestly, it matches the rest of the fence, it matches the railing at the black trim. Um, it's a white house with black trim, there's a neighbor two yards down that has the same fence that I do. And I just thought it would be better, you know, aesthetically all the way around for everybody to look at. And I, so I had the fence people out and we talked about it and, um. We came to the conclusion, or I did after, sort of measuring things out, that if we did a standard, you know, five foot with one foot baluster top. It, it really didn't do the job in terms of the privacy, so I took this photo from the ground level and. Um, it, it's not that bad, I think maybe a five plus one, but if you were on the first floor deck, which is elevated like, say, three feet or so. Or if you were on the second floor deck, or if you were looking out the back windows of either floor. You'd be surprised how much more you can see of the, of the neighbor's yard, so measuring things out and taking viewpoints from those vantage points. Measuring things out and taking viewpoints from those vantage points, I, um. You know, I, that's where I wanted to do a six foot, I guess, a six foot blockade with the one foot baluster on top of it. So that led me obviously to the town, led me to Colleen, which has led me to you guys. And so that's why I'm here to see if I can get a special permit for that. Um, it's basically an aesthetic thing. Um, I want it to look nice for everybody, um, myself included. I'm not sure my neighbors really care quite as much as I do. But, um, I think it'd just be more aesthetically appealing. That extra foot makes a huge difference in terms of just the privacy itself. Um, I would also note that, you know, I, I don't know if my neighbors through the backyard there. Maybe they're, they're tenants. I actually did speak with the owner of the property. And I've spoken with him before. He's A O K with it. Um, I offered to paint, you know, both sides of the fence or stain both sides of the fence. I suppose the, the neighbors to the back would have the same, you know, possible benefit that I would, um, looking back at theirs. I, uh. I don't want to sound hypocritical. My backyard is not done up just yet. My tenants on the first floor have a dog who's very active. And my backyard is sort of his playground. So it's a little bit torn up there, but I mean, does that potential and everything? But. Um, I think, you know, they would also benefit from having a privacy fence. It's basically just an extra foot for a baluster top is what I'm looking to do.
Great, thank you so much. Um. Go ahead and share that, uh, picture that you had shown. Um. It's just here. So this is the existing, um. Iron fence, um. That separates the two properties. Um, and you had said this is a six foot fence. Is that correct?
That is, yes.
Okay. So the. Uh, the proposed fence would be about. Four, four and, four to five bricks higher if you're counting on the right hand side.
Yeah, I counted four, maybe it might be five, but yes, about where you, your cursor was.
Yeah. So somewhere in this area.
Yes.
Um. And then where the fence disappears behind your shed, um. What is it terminate at on the other end?
Uh, that is the corner that abuts the other, I guess, two other properties. So you can see that yellow house, they, they're, uh, properties up and along that line and. My neighbor to the other side. So, um, it's just a, it's a kind of a straight corner, a strict, uh, right corner, yeah.
So would the fence just be along the back line? It wouldn't turn the corner and come down the side?
Correct. It, it would actually just be about, uh, well, the fence below measured out sixteen feet about where that tree is. We would then have a sort of a standard five plus one.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Um. Let me go ahead and stop the share here. Or actually, I do have the photo. I. Apologize, it's rotated on my screen and my computer's not wanting to rotate it. So, um, this is sort of the proposed style of fence with, um. That was submitted by the applicant.
Yes.
Okay, um. So this was submitted to the board and I, Mr. Hamlin and myself had a couple of conversations back and forth about this because we're a little. Uncertain exactly how, um. To couch a, a special permit on this. So the, the town by law doesn't specifically. Include the, um, that if you have a. Fence that is taller than six feet on the property line, you have to get a special permit. It's not written in the bylaw, but it is longstanding practice of the. Um. Of the Inspector Services Department that, uh, any structure. That the, they consider the fence a structure if it's, and if it's on the property line and it's six feet or less, they. Um, they allow it by right, but if it is, if it is taller, then. If it's between six and seven feet, then it needs to be either six feet back from the property line, or they would want a special permit from the board. Um. And this is something that has not come before us, um, in my recollection. So. And Mr. Hamlin and I have gone back and forth a little bit. It's exactly how this fits within the, the, the framework of a special permit. Um. And, uh, Mr. Hamlin, you can feel free to correct me. Um, but by, by sense, after talking to. Um, Dr. Jeff Special Services, talking to counsel, um. So the best way to frame this for the board is it's. Almost like an appeal. Um. And a request for a special permit from the. From the building inspector. So the, the, the building inspector says, well, it needs to be six feet. Um. Unless the board finds that seven feet is acceptable. Um, okay, that's sort of how it has come to us, even though it's kind of a, a request that's a little bit unusual. Mr. Hamlin, is that basically the?
I think that's basically right. Let me just sort of. Say that the. With the. Will the inspector treat this as an accessory structure, which it clearly is? Um, the provision about six feet. Is not actually in the bylaw. Uh, there, there's nothing, and you know, uh. Another kind of accessory structure is a shed and there it's seven feet and it is in the bylaw. So there, there's. It's not entirely clear to me at least what the provision of the bylaw is that says that. You can't build a seven foot fence by right. It's just that by tradition, we have. Our department has, has not done that. Uh, but that's one question. The other question is. Suppose, suppose it just for the sake of argument that, that. There is something there that says that, that it can't be more than six feet. There's really nothing in the bylaw that says that we have any jurisdiction over that through a special permit. Um, the. What the application cites, section three point three, three point three, which we deal with all a lot. But that only says that we have the authority to. Consider special permits. And then it gives a series of criteria which we use day in and day out for what we're supposed to. To do with that, but we never have treated that as a provision that grants a right to request a special permit. If we did, it would pretty much eat up our, most of our. Most of our variance jurisdiction because it's always there and there's nothing special about this one. Um, some thought has been given to say, looking at three point. Three point four, which defines. Conditions and it does enable us to, to, as a condition of a special permit, uh, to, uh, impose. A, a restriction on height. Um. And that's all fine and good too, but section three point four is what you, three point, three point four is what you. Rely on when you already have the jurisdiction to do with the special permit. And you're just looking at what the condi-. What the conditions would be if you, if you granted it. So I'm left with a strange thing that not only am I not quite sure what authorizes. Regulation of this at all. And if, in my untutored view, Mr. DeCile should be able to just do his fence. Uh, without any further interference from us or the building inspector. But if he can't do that, I don't see what is the basis for our jurisdiction under special permit. There is however, something that, that. I mean, in general, we have appellate jurisdiction over the building department. And if the building department were to reject Mr. DeCile's, uh, request for this, then he could. Have to carefully look at the restricted rules on, on bringing cases, but he could then appeal it to us. And it would be before us in that way as an appeal rather than as a special permit. And then we could consider. All the kind of stuff that we've been talking to just now. This is sort of, it's a longstanding tradition. I think it is a longstanding tradition about. How high your fence can be and, and that sort of thing. Um, but. Given the fact that at least some of us, not me, have been on the board for a long time and don't remember ever having seen this again. It isn't really a very longstanding tradition that we grant special permits on it, uh, or if it is, it's. Source is so far back in the memory of the town that none of us, uh, has access to it. So I'm a little bit perplexed about this, uh, because it's a very important principle for us that you have to. That to have a special permit, you have to find some place in the bylaw that specifically authorizes the special permit. You can't just make that up. And that. That eliminates, for me at least, that would eliminate the special. Permit as a basis for jurisdiction and it suggests to me that the appropriate way for us to apply some sort of appellate review is through an appeal.
Um. I, I think listening to you, Mr. Hamlin, I, I feel like this is probably what the, the founders of the country were arguing about the constitution. If it was silent on something, what does that mean? If it doesn't specifically enumerate a power, what does that mean? Um, I, if I'm understanding you correctly, it sounds like it would go to the building inspector and. Yeah. And if reject, if that is rejected, then I would come back to you. Uh, and, and as a matter of appeal.
Right.
Okay.
Right. And the rules we'd applied for it are potentially somewhat different. I mean, you wouldn't use the same factors for special permits, but. And you would straight up raise the question as to whether or not there's anything in the zoning bylaw that prevents you from doing this to begin with, which I think is a difficult question.
Okay.
Mr. Hamlin, is there not a way at this stage that we can? Sort of direct the building inspector to, to indicate that the board has no objection. If the board. Has no objection to indicate to the building inspector that the board has no objection to the erection of this fence. And. Just return that, an opinion to the building inspector? And then if he approves it by right, then we're all done? It, I, I, I hate to stretch this out over months for the.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. It seems to me that maybe we should, I mean, this is clearly something that now that it's up, it's, it's just going to be on the agenda for town meeting next year, but. That's next year. Um. I think that, uh, uh. I think giving an informal. Thing of if, of where we're leaning, if in fact we're leaning towards. What I've just said before, I mean, if we have a leaning, we might indicate what it is and, uh. And, you know, after that, he can continue to do what he wants, wants to do. If he. If he, if he disappoints Mr. DeCile, Mr. DeCile can come with us. The other thing too is we could just go to him and. It, there are procedural things that have to do with appeals, right? They have to be brought within a certain period of time of a denial and that sort of thing. And often we rely on those to deny appeals. So, uh, it's important. To turn a square corner if it's going to come back to it that way, but it's entirely possible. I mean, Mr. Mr. DeChampa knows all about the difficulties we have, we have here of, of being able to just root this in. In some intelligible legal narrative and, uh, I'm, I'm pretty sure that, that. That he would not insist on doing. On, on a full out difficult process and we could then expedite it if we had to coming back. I don't know what he would think. But I think yes, it may, if the question is, could we maybe do the, continue this, do this informally? And if it'll all work out, we could just dismiss without prejudice. That would ultimately be. A better solution. And then we need to work on getting the law to say what we thought it did.
Could the board issue an opinion to the? That the board votes on to the building inspector indicating. A census to the. The subject matter?
Well, I felt that, I, we just, we just recently dealt with the case which we dismissed precisely because it didn't fit. Within any of the things we have jurisdiction to do. And I don't think that we would want to suddenly turn around on. On, on that. We can hear appeals. We can hear special permits. We can do variances, other kinds of special permits. They're all listed. And if it doesn't fall there, it's not something we have jurisdiction for. So it seems to me that there's nothing we can do formally, although. Uh, the building inspector could on his own do a number, do any, do a number of things.
Okay.
In.
Uh.
So in, in that case, uh. Also welcome hearing from, um, other members of the board. Do you recommend that we would continue? Or that we would? Dismissed because it's not required?
I would. I, I, I would, and just to be conservative, I would like to keep this on our docket. Because there may also be procedural ways just to convert this into an appeal and avoid losing time. So rather than do anything now that would foreclose our options later on. It seems to me that it would be the better practice to keep it on the docket, let the conversations take place that. Need to take place and then we can decide. You know, in two weeks, what, what approach we should take, we should take to it.
Okay. Other members of the board? No, okay. Um. As this is a public hearing, I do need to. Allow public comment on the matter at hand. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing for public comment. Public comment. Sticking as it relates to the matter at hand should be directed at the board for the purpose of helping to inform our decision. Those. On Zoom can press the react tab, uh, the raise hands feature on the react tab, or if you're calling in, you can dial star nine. And are there any members of public who wish to address this application? Which is for a, uh, fence in excess of six feet at sixty-seven Foster Street. Seeing none, I'll close the public here, comment period. Um. So with that, uh, so Mr. Hamlin, so the clear directive would be, uh. The board or the applicant should. Address this with, uh, the inspector or both.
I think both. I think we ought to have a conversation that we, that, that expands on the concern and, and works it out. So that he understands a little bit about what the, what the reason is why we haven't just, just proceeded tonight to get to it. And, uh, and he may be. I mean, he, he then has lots of discretion to do things and, and, uh. He may just decide that the best, he, he, he needs to make the next choice. That's, that establishes. If he says, look, our rule is seven feet is more than six feet is no good. And he said, that's why I want to stick with it, then, then we could address converting that into an appeal and then address the sorrow.
Okay.
All right. Does, does that make any degree of sense, Mr. Cilio?
I, I think so. It sounds like my, um, you're directing me to the building inspector to, um, I guess. I'm not sure what I'm officially requesting. I'm requesting, um. Uh, a, a special permit from the building inspector. Is that what I'm requesting?
Though the, you would be asking the building permit for a determination. As to whether the building permit for the fence, is it acceptable or not?
Okay.
Well, actually, there's one. The, I believe that there's one little glitch there too, and that is, is that you don't need a building permit for that. So you, basically, you, you would go and say, I would like a determination from you as to whether or not. The fence that I plan. Is consistent with the, the zoning bylaw and allowed.
Okay. And. Uh, is there a chance he might kick me back to you?
Um, if he, if, if he says, he, he could say. You know, it's all very confusing and that for now, let's wait and let town meeting deal with it and it's okay. Or he could say, it's our tradition and it's not okay. And either way, you'd appeal it to us. And what we would attempt to do is, is. Do that in a way that, that brings the case to us right away rather than going through, uh, the normal longer appeal process.
Okay. I think I understand.
We will have the same conversation with, with building department as well. Um. And again, that we. The board is unable to really. Issue, render a decision because it doesn't have, uh, authority to issue a decision as it stands today. But. If he reaches a decision and says. That you can build it, then you're all set. And if he says you can't build it, then you can. Consider that an appeal and an appeal is something that we can act on.
Okay. I understand.
Um, so. I would go ahead and say that we should. Continue. Um. And we can continue for, we can continue until June twenty-four. Which is getting busy, um. But if the board can, but that should be plenty of time to work things out with Mr. Champion. With any luck, when this comes back, this is a very, very short matter. If it comes back at all. Right, okay. So with that, is there anything further from the board? Is there anyone from the board who is concerned about this fence? Seeing none. Okay. So then I moved at the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington, continue the public hearing for dock at three, eight, five, zero, sixty-seven Foster Street. To Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five at seven thirty P M.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Dupont.
Yes.
Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. Little Blank?
Yes.
Mr. Branowski?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. We are continued on sixty-seven Foster Street. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Uh, and we will. Try to get this worked out in the next two weeks.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, you as well. Um. With that, the next, going back to. What we have, uh, next is dock at three, eight, five, one, two oh eight Jason Street. Um. Applicants could go ahead and. Um, applicants could go ahead, introduce themselves and tell us what they are proposing to do.
Oh, I need a cup of coffee.
Um, I got the chocolate covered espresso beans, but they're not, I can't quite pass them through the through the screen.
Way past my bedtime. I don't know how you guys do this. I wish I had good news for you, but I'm looking for new paper road modifications, twelve foot basements. I need a seven foot fence around my entire property. It's gonna be a long night. You guys go ahead and get some snacks.
Yeah, here we go.
So my name is Andy Marks. I am at two oh eight Jason and we are looking for uh, we're wanting to keep our current setbacks. So we're currently nonconforming and we want to stay that way. And what I gave you guys was a uh, solid concept drawing that basically kind of gives you an idea of where the new footprint would rest. I don't know if I can, do you have that to pull up or do I need to try and pull that up?
I can go ahead and pull that up for you. Okay, so should be the front page of the set?
Sure.
Okay.
Uh, you can, I guess, scroll down. Okay, so that's existing. And you can see there, it's like right around the twenty one foot is what we've got. This is existing. And then if you go to the next page, it should show you where we're at as far as concept.
Okay, so currently, yeah, so twenty point eight feet, uh, which is the corner nearest Pleasant View Road that sets the front setback for both Jason and Pleasant View. And then the proposed um, would maintain that front yard setback. So is this? Would you be fully demolishing the existing house and building an entirely new house?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
There is the reality of uh, the from the plan view, the southern and the eastern wall could be kept. But everybody I've talked to G C wise doesn't love that idea and it doesn't really meet the energy conservation. And so it's probably in our best interest to just start anew.
Okay. Uh, so this is sort of a little bit landscaping. So you're not changing the curb cut to the street, you're just
Correct.
Okay. It's nice elevations.
We have a crazy grade on this parcel as well. Here to discuss it, I I heard the first one, so.
I mean, certainly in this, you can see where the, and if you visit the site, you can clearly see the the stone coming out of the ground.
Yeah, the the everything that's denoted on the even those markups there, it's pretty accurate. We've gotten some good measurements.
Sketches. Um, and then so these are uh, foundation?
Foundation, yes.
And then Axon and the foundations, you can see the intrusion of the existing stone at the back.
Yeah.
Um, again, the basement level. Uh, one floor up.
Yep. Half of that would be essentially first floor from the street sides and then from the backyard that it almost is non-existent. It's below terrain. Those are all casement windows on the the plan viewed north and northwest.
Okay. And then upper floor.
That's a proper second floor from the front and first floor from the back.
Got it. And then uh,
Top floor, yep, half floor to deck.
Okay. And that the deck is the portion labeled porch here?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's not covered?
No, it's uncovered.
Dimensions and window types. And so this is a request for a variance. Um.
To keep the existing.
To keep that, to take that back. So the lot, it's the lot size. Um, is it on here?
The lot size, I think, is like just under ten. It's it's on the other submission. There's some paperwork that
Oh.
Architect had to populate.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. So the existing uh, lot is ninety eight hundred square feet, where the minimum is six thousand. So it's a conforming lot in some areas, conforming in terms of frontage. Um, the non, the front yard setback is nonconforming at twenty point eight, where it needs to be twenty five. Um. And then the side yard um, depth is ten feet. The requirement is ten feet and it meets that. The rear yard um is currently listed as thirty two feet and that's compliant. Um. The open space calculation, um, the site's a little odd because it's sort of rough graded at the moment on part of it.
It is, and there's the concrete slab is still out there. If you go back up to the survey, yeah, there you go. You can see that rectangular kind of thing stuffed in the trees. That's all a concrete or it's got a bed, a very shallow bed of concrete and then slate atop.
Okay. Um. And so the proposal is conforming with regards to all other criteria. It's just that existing, that's that front yard setback that you're
Yes, correct.
Hoping to maintain. Okay. Um. So I'm gonna go ahead and stop the share and ask for comments from the board.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. DuPont?
So I just was looking at the application and I have a question because in the application on page three, it says the proposed gross floor area is thirty four hundred feet. But at the very end, it says that the total proposed gross floor area is forty seven hundred square feet and change. So I'm wondering about that for starters.
So if that has been populated incorrectly, um, the I know that the the foundation and the footprint of the building uh, has one value versus the total square footage of the house. So I'm not sure if that was uh, if there was a misentry on that, but it sounds like the two values you're going there and I don't know which one's which. I mean, obviously, I'm going to assume the thirty seven hundred or what was the value you just said?
Thirty four hundred?
Thirty four. That that's going to be the footprint because the entire house is not it's it's obviously two and a half stories. So you're looking at I think basement and all.
So it's listed right now that the proposed basement is eight hundred and seventy, effectively eight seventy five square feet. Proposed first floor is one thousand thirty two. The proposed second floor is one thousand seven hundred forty seven.
Okay.
And then the third floor, uh, the attic floor is listed as six ninety two. Um. And then porches and balconies are listed as all weather porches, balconies are listed as three seventy one. Are there enclosed porches?
No enclosed porches. And also let me emphasize, these are conceptual drawings and they've not been submitted uh, for any kind of purpose outside of this discussion. And so nothing is concretized. Um, the architect has much to do, but we didn't want to overly commit her until we knew what our footprint was or where we were building.
Okay.
Obviously, if you if you destroy the house, as I understand it, we must meet the twenty five foot setbacks on both street sides. And if I understood it correctly, or she understood it correctly. And at that point, we are pressed up against rock in a hard place.
Quite literally.
Yep.
Okay. Um.
So DuPont, I'm not saying you're wrong. It there there certainly could be some incorrect values there. Just know that nothing there is hardened. We we're, we will certainly uh, submit something, a buildable to the city. And that would certainly have to go through everyone, Champ included. And he would have to approve all that. We just want to make sure we know what we're building, what where we're building.
Right.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, I I appreciate that. I walked over there today and I was looking and I was trying to get a feel and I certainly saw that large formation of rock toward the back. And but what I was trying to figure out is, so a lot of times when we have variance applications before us, they don't clear the first hurdle, which is where there's a discussion about whether or not there are conditions for the lot which relate to topography, soil condition or lot shape. And so we almost never, not almost never, but if we don't get through that hurdle, we don't get to the next part of the inquiry. And so the next part of the inquiry is whether or not denial of the variance request would create a financial hardship. And so one of the things I was wondering, and it it relates partly to which of those uh, square foot calculations is correct. Is that, you know, I understand that we're talking about four point two feet from both street sides, right? If you could
Correct.
Four point two feet from either of those, you would be in conformity. And I guess what I wasn't clear on when I was looking at the land was, for instance, if you're pushing from, is it called Pleasant View?
Yes.
So if you're pushing away from there, you know, four point two feet, can you move the structure four point two feet? You know, if you just, you know, had to push it with your hands, can you push it to the side that far? And so maintain what it is that you want to do?
It, the reality is you can redesign anything to to serve a purpose. The structure as you see it in order to accommodate a a drive bay where you can fit vehicles in that that what is, I call it a drive bay as opposed to a garage because it is a larger bay where you'd pull in uh, a single car, park it on the interior, and then the other car would have to follow in behind it. So it's not a two door garage. It's a single large garage door. So the reason I say that is the only way you can get two cars under that house is for that Pleasant View four foot extension. The moment you push me that four point two, I have to do more drilling and I'm sure you guys are aware, if you aren't aware, we had to core drill and hydraulically, hydraulically break the rock that you see to the left and to basically make that space that you see, which isn't cleared out as of yet, because there's a lot of material there and we didn't want to commit to the disposal and starting that dance until we knew what we were doing. But the reality is we did break that. And uh, I guess to your point about finance, that wasn't cheap. So doing more of it isn't thrilling to me, but you know, that's why I'm here.
So if I can comment, Mr. Chairman, I guess I would say so that, you know, moving it back from Jason Street, four point two feet, from what I could see and where that, you know, big outcropping was, that seems to be pretty obvious that that's much more difficult.
Absolutely.
And pushing it up Jason Street, that four point two feet sideways away from Pleasant View. If I understand correctly, you're saying that that would require a considerable amount more of excavation and drilling?
So basically, looking at the basement plan set as it is, um, in order to in order to go over, to push the house four point um, two feet more to the what I would certainly call the plans, plans west. Um, you're, the only reason you're on on my team in relation to the Jason request is because I've exposed that rock. Um, we excavated that section. You you can also, I can also show you that if we go and finish excavating to the uh, west side, plans west, that you would see the same stone. It's it's there. It exists and it persists through that whole section of yard. So there's no getting away from it. We are on a mountain. And what we did drill out and and uh, and basically break up, frac up. At one point, it was like a ravine in there. You could you could jump down in there and that was basically just to make grade with the existing basement. So it puts you up against the sidewall of ledge. So to continue going, we would have to take out the equivalent mountain. Uh, additionally, there are a couple of trees there that become a consequence. As I get a little closer to the root system, I'd like to avoid, but I'll take any direction.
Thank you.
Other members of the board? Uh, just a quick question. So the trees that are indicated here on the site, um, so obviously the, it appears that the tree
North plans north.
Behind the house is going to come out, the one that's right next to the house. Are there any other trees that need to be removed?
No, that's it. Everything there else that that's that's there is staying and we're actually where they did a little bit of excavating, like we've noticed this summer that the one that's in the forward of the yard looks like it's taking a little hit in the roots. So I'm going to try and get an arbor out here to save it hopefully. It's got a couple limbs that haven't leaved up, but the rest of it looks healthy. So hopefully we'll get to keep it.
Okay.
I'm not a tree hugger, but I'm not a hater either.
Okay, um. So this is an application for a variance. So um, the criteria are a little bit different. Um, as Mr. Tupan has sort of alluded to, um, to the, there are four findings that the board needs to to make under state law in order to allow a variance proceed. The first would be that there are circum, why there are circumstances related to the soil condition, shape or topography, especially affecting such land or structures, but not generally affecting the zoning district in which it's located, that would substantiate the granting of a variance. Second is why the literal enforcement of the provisions of the zoning bylaw specifically related to the circumstances affecting the land or structure noted above would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise to the petitioner. Uh, the third is the desirable leaf relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. And the last is that um, desirable or relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the zoning bylaw. So those are the criteria that the board would need to consider. Um. So while we're thinking of that, I was going to go ahead and open this for public comment. Um. So uh, public comment is taken as it relates to the matter at hand, should be directed at the board for the purpose of informing its decision. Those wishing to address the board can raise their hand using the the raise hand button under the react tab. And I don't think there's anyone calling in by phone. Um, but star nine would be had to be recognized, be called upon by the chair, ask your questions or comments. Um. So with that, we have, uh, the first is, uh, do we have Joel Rubin?
Uh, just want to come out in support of my neighbor, Andy.
Fantastic. Uh, I just need your address of the record.
Forty forty five Spring Street. We're across the street from him.
Thanks, Joel. Sorry you're up so late.
He's way late for me.
This is way late for me too. It's okay. Me too.
So seeing I really care.
I I do have a question. Did you, did you guys actually meet in person at some point at these hours?
The board?
Yeah.
Oh, we're constantly up this late.
Woo, in person, someplace, there's a location where you guys, we all get together?
No, 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 just over the, over Zoom. We used to get together in person, but not since COVID.
There would have to be a lot of alcohol and food to do this every night. I don't know how you do this.
All right. Well, I think I've said my say that I support this and I think I'm gonna sign out and go walk the dog, which we need, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you staying with us.
You bet.
Next is uh, Ben Giso?
Hi, um, I'm Ben Giso. Uh, I am thirty six, thirty six Pleasant View.
Hey, Ben.
Andy, how are you?
Good, sir.
Um, so in terms of the Um, so in terms of the the plan, um, no, no issue at all. The only thing that, uh, you know, I wanted to raise concern about is the traffic pattern and how that would, you know, it's a huge project. Um. On Jason, two or three weeks ago, there was some some excavation in the street and they put Jason one way and sent traffic up Pleasant View, which you know, made traffic maybe five, five, maybe ten times what it typically is. Um, and so I don't know if this is the right hearing to ask about that, but I just, it is the the notice we got about this uh, variance in this meeting. So um, you know, I just.
I don't know why there's so much traffic on Jason. It's crazy. Like this is not, this is an absurd amount of people.
All day, all day long. And you know, we.
We need some speed humps or something. It's just insane.
Yeah, so that is, uh, that's the only thing that I want to, um, just, you know, in my opportunity to have public comment. Thank you.
Absolutely. Oh, thank you. Um. So there, the town has something that's called the Good Neighbor Agreement. So any project to this size, um, abutting neighbors are required to get notification. Um, that includes information both about um, who's carrying on the project, how to get in touch with the contractor, how to get in touch with the homeowner. Um, and some of the rules and regulations in regards to hours that you're of uh, that work is allowed to be carried on, et cetera. Um, so that's a notification that would go out to all butters. So if uh, if there were any issues, um, you would know who directly to contact. Um. With product to this scale, I don't think there's any sort of traffic mitigation that goes into the building permit process, but that would need to be determined by inspectional services. That wouldn't be us.
Yeah. And there's no doubt in mind that, in my mind, that there would be some kind of chaos. You'd have good and bad days, but up until the point where we had foundation in place, you could guarantee it would be a mess. Yeah.
But you're not changing the location of the driveway. So that will affect, so once everything is done, it won't impact the the traffic pattern in the neighborhood at all.
Correct.
Perfect. Seeing no other members of the public wishing to address the application, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Um. So again, this is a a variance application. Um, as the applicant has noted, um, is really looking for some kind of almost pre-clearance from the board uh, for the the project that is still somewhat under development. Um, and the primary question is if the existing twenty point eight foot setback can be maintained or if the board would recall, would uh, not agree that a variance is a lot, is uh, authorized, in which case the twenty five foot setback would be imposed. Um, because this would be involve the demolition of the of the building. Um. So are there any questions or comments from the board? Um, but the the, so the one question I have in my mind is, does the board have definitive enough information in the application package to render a decision for variance? Or do we need information that is more uh, more succinct? Um, in order to properly condition the the granting of a variance?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dupont.
So the only question I had was the initial one, which was what is the number for the total gross floor area? Because I do think it's important and obviously as much as Mr. Marx is correct that, you know, the building department's gonna insist that the plans that are submitted or followed. I still not sure that I know what it is that the plans are gonna show. And perhaps when you went through and looked at those numbers, maybe you had come up with a conclusion um, yourself as to which of those numbers was accurate. But I I think it's important to know what that number actually is because there are two of them at the present moment. And I think we should have one.
Yeah. So the application clearly, the the number forty seven seventeen point five nine includes uh, area that includes all weather habitable, has a number for all weather habitable porches and balconies, which do not, which are actually an open deck. So that's the number does not count towards the total. Um, so if we accept the numbers in the gross floor area information, uh, which is the eight seventy four point four three for basement, one oh three two point two six for first, one seven four seven point three five for second, and six nine two point four four for the attic floor. Those appear to add up to four thousand three hundred and forty six point four eight. So I think we could, the board could condition, um. You know, we could put a number, we could say you know, shall not exceed four thousand three hundred forty five square feet in gross floor area. And then that would be, we would condition it that way. And then if they need to make some modifications, they could sort of play around, but that that's effectively the volume number they've given us today and we could hold that number.
Okay.
Any other concerns from members of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
Um, I I think it's it's assumed that we we would be approving the footprint. You know, the various dimensions there, uh, that's probably primarily what we're being asked for.
That's what I was wondering too.
And I guess the question I have is that is it's not usual for us to do that.
I see.
You know, to have a concept, plan to do that. Usually we're dealing with something that when you do it, then those would be not construction drawings, but at least good enough to get past ISD, which this wouldn't yet. Uh, and I'm wondering if in addition to volume, there are other ways of I mean, I understand the objective of not occurring architecture expenses and so on to get a a plan that you don't know you can build. Uh, but I'm wondering if those of you who do this for a living, you know, the the architecture part uh, couldn't think of the other ways of of, you know, specifying what the what the footprint would look like. Um.
The footprint.
Or at least, you know, with what it is that we see on that second part, that's not exactly right. It's really the 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 uh, concept of the envelope. The question I have is is how far we we can go or should go to making that less uh, amorphous, amorphous. I mean, it's, right now it's extremely amorphous and lots of things could change in it and and uh, and I guess that my question is, is what what would be realistic and sensible to do to have a little more definite sense?
I mean, in a lot of jurisdictions, you would be required to submit to the building department for a permit. You'd deny the permit and refer to the zoning board for a variance or for a special permit. Um, in which case you basically have to have the plans buttoned up so it's clear as to what's going to happen. And then, um. When the board makes this decision, like we, our first condition is that the the pla, the plans and specifications approved by the board shall be the final plans and specifications, which in this case it would not be. Um. Which does pose a little bit of a you know, an issue for how to proceed. I mean, I think the board could certainly, um.
My question is, if if we assumed that, let's say I hardened just the 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 actual footprint. So that was my constraint. And from there, I forced the architect to work within that footprint. Would that be satisfactory? Or are we still needing to? And 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 to elaborate a little bit, even for those who do know a little bit about architecture or could be architects, the pushback I'm getting on my side usually revolves around, well, the unknown. How am I supposed to design against the unknown? Are you going to get rid of this rock? Are you going to leave that rock? What are, are we going to envelop it? Or is it going to be hammered out? What's left? So those big question marks make it difficult for her to conquer, conquer, concretize her finals. So like I said, if maybe the the footprint itself is something that we could all agree on, and then we just are forced within those constraints. But, I mean, as you wish, you guys lead the way.
So if the board was to approve of, if we were to go back and share this plan. So this site plan here, if we were to so this plan, which is A O three.
Yes.
If we were to essentially approve this plan, um. With uh, whatever other conditions we want to impose, then, um. I think that would give, because the the main thing is we want to make sure that the building inspector can you know, do his work with the knowledge that he's in compliance with the with the variance and the, because the variance is going to have to be recorded with the county and whatnot that it makes. It's something that can be followed going into the future. Um. And if we set the, yeah, and once we set the setback, then that's the setback. Um. Is there, is there anyone on the board who's uncomfortable with that kind of a procedure of, we'll take the the site plan showing the proposed, the outline of the proposed structure. And that would be what the board would be approving. And then we would also stipulate that, you know, as one of the standard conditions, any deviation has to be approved by the board. So if you were to make subsequent changes, you would be back in front of the board.
Gotcha. Yeah, I mean, uh, unless it was less than, right? If we, if we shrunk that footprint, you, I'm assuming you'd be good with that. As long as we stayed within.
Yeah, you'd have to stay within that.
Right.
Outline.
The maximum, yeah, that would be the maximum envelope. I got you.
Mr. Chair.
Charlie?
Um, on the, the one question I had relates to the front yard, the twenty point eight feet. It's right now to the unenclosed stair, right? Um, it's not to the, um. I I wonder, um, the, but then the the next proposed one has it towards an enclosed part of the building, uh, you know, without knowing what is happening there. Um, that projected part seems like the door is set in the back and there is this kind of uh, a four facade projecting on the upper floor, um, and some kind of an opening at the lower floor. Um. I mean, the only thing what I wanted to know is that, you know, it's the front projected portion is um, set at the same current setback, although we don't know program wise what's happening there.
So you're talking about the piece that you see in the, in the
Right.
Yes. So that that actually that piece is an exterior piece is uh, an aesthetic piece and an archway that leads to the door and the interior.
Right.
That, I mean, I understand that that does have an impact because from there above it, as you look at the face, that would be living area above it. But on the base floor, it is, is exposed. It's just basically the, uh, uh, where mechanicals terminate on the interior because the existing mechanicals that come from the street because of the way the ledge is, everything is in the trough that leads to that, that little portion of wall. Where you're looking at the front door there, immediately to the right of it is still outside because there are mechanicals that would have to come in and terminate there.
Underneath that uh, overhang portion of the living space above?
Correct. Yes. You've got everything that 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 services the house right now. Now, I'm I'm sure they, the GC may change that, but
Right.
as of now, that's where that was, we were just trying to solve a couple of problems.
Sure. That clarifies, Mr. Chair, because if if um, is constrained by obviously the ledge dictating the utilities coming into the property and, you know, it it needs to be enclosed, so be it. So I, you know, I had a question, question, it's answered. I'm I'm all set.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
I think Venk's questions raised something for me that just to if, if it's, and the unenclosed stairs now is a projection into the front, into the front yard, right? That could be approved by special permit? And so it's raising a question with me as to what the current setback, the current front yard depth actually is and whether this is in effect, I mean, by changing what goes in there and ma- making it not only solid, so to speak, but also extends up a story, uh, might be actually changing what the the new setback would actually be.
Yeah, so currently.
Twenty point eight and where we are now might very well be conforming.
So currently, the twenty point eight feet um, is to a corner of the house. Um, so it is to the actual house. It's not, the front porch coincidentally happens to be the same setback. But the that twenty point eight is to the corner of the existing building. And agreed that there will be a more, you know, there'll be more of the building at that dimension, but, um.
Yeah.
She seemed to be thoughtful in her design, so I don't know if it's gonna check all the boxes, but I'm willing to take anything back to her. So feel free.
Mr. Chair, um, sorry, where, where is the twenty point eight towards the corner there? I see to, to the bottom riser touching that dash line there, right? Uh, I wonder where was that twenty point eight in the pro, in the existing plot plan though, at the corner?
It's this number that I'm circled here.
Oh, 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 that would be
That corner.
Towards, right, right. To towards a Pleasant View road, but from the Jason roadside, the dash line coinciding.
Hmm.
That's what I was focused on. That's now is enclosed part, which is what I think Mr. Hanlon is alluding to is, I was, what I'm, what I was initially concerned was it's towards an enclosed part of the entry and now we're enclosing it with that trigger, you know, are we, you know, over the non-conformity on that?
Right. So the, this is actually an interesting question. So in a, obviously on a corner, um, each side that faces a street is considered a front yard.
Right.
The assumption that's being made here is that the same front yard setback would apply to both streets.
Right.
The twenty point eight that it was established along Pleasant View would necessarily extend along Jason so that the required setback along Jason is also twenty point eight. Um.
That is how my architect understood it. But like I said, if I need to take something back to her, you let me know.
Yeah. Yeah, I did not, did not discuss that question specifically with the inspector as to whether that is the interpretation, the correct interpretation or not. Um, certainly, given the prominence of the, the way that the house sits on the hill, the side of those steps going up is definitely a you know, a subs- substantial marker of where the house is. Um.
Also, in that set, I think the first page is the survey and that's how the surveyors who I'm assuming do a bunch of Arlington stuff, that's how they denoted it as well.
Right.
Oh, maybe not. I'm sorry. I'm, oh, that's the, that is the survey. It is.
This is just the picture of the house.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You're right. That was actually the survey just with the new uh, footprint.
Yeah.
Overlay.
Yeah, this is being proposed.
I mean, if I may, Mr. Chair, I mean, minus that area, I I don't, I mean, I personally
Mm hmm.
don't take objection to the footprint. I would like to hear the other board members on that. Um, so.
I mean, my, my sense of this, there's sort of, there's two things, sorry to keep sharing and then sharing and sharing. My sense of this, there's sort of, there's two things, sorry to keep sharing and then sharing and sharing and then sharing. The two things. About the site that sort of stand out to me, one is the, the obvious legend topography. Issues that the site has. But the other is. The way that it meets the property to the north.
Right.
Um, where it creates this pinch point that you have, that they, he has to stay. Ten feet back from really. Makes it difficult to. You know, if this was a straight line, it would be, be a much more obvious shape. And if you look at the. You know, the other properties around the site, all the other properties are, this is the only one that has a concave side on it. Uh, I guess this one does too. Um, but to a much lesser extent, so it really does. Excuse me. Because of the, the set point, because of the. The required points, it gets really. Tight going through there, it's really difficult to take advantage of the. You know, the full area of the site, so. Really. To some degree is limited to this. Portion, which, I mean, all of that goes, I think goes towards. The first criteria. And. You know, you could say if you, you know, if this, if you, they did, if this did have to be twenty five feet back and that was. You know, that's the literal enforcement, what is the? What is the hardship? And the hardship is really just that the. You know, the applicant would be unable to do necessarily what, you know, the full extent of what they're hoping to accomplish on the property. And they would also be forced back into the hill where the. You know, where the, the issues involving the ledge and stuff are worse than they, they are towards the street. And then. The desirable relief. You know, the. The substantial, you know, the question of substantial detriment, does the. Four point two feet closer to the street than would be required is that. Does that cause a detriment to the neighborhood? Does that increase the density or? Cause other issues to the neighborhood that would be. Limit their enjoyment at their properties. Now, I think that's something. We each have to think about and then how desirable relief can be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent. Or purpose of the zoning bylaw. I mean, this still does. Allow for an orderly expansion, it still allows for. Open space on the property, it does allow for. You know, air and water and all those kinds of. Uh, things that the, the purposes of the bylaws speak to. I think depending on how people view this, I think there is a path. But the real question is just how do we, if, if the board is inclined to approve of a variance, then. Can we condition based on what the information that we have so that the board is comfortable with? With being able to control the decision that it reaches.
Mister Chairman.
Mister Hanlon.
There's, there's one thing about the purpose that I think that we will have to address. Um, I think it doesn't outweigh what the chair just said, but. Uh, as you'll remember in a recent case, we emphasized the importance of. Essentially amortizing and not preserving nonconformity. And this case is really about preserving nonconformity. And there's reasons to do that, uh, and even in that other case, we, we weren't precipitous about it. Um, but it is something that doesn't usually come up. Uh, when we're dealing with that, with that, uh. Part of the, of the, uh. Of the statutory criteria and that. Needs at least a reasonable response on our part if we granted, if we. Rendered opinion dealing with it.
Hmm.
You know, granting. And I think that, you know, I basically would like to, I mean, for me, it's a balancing test. Not balancing test, for me, it's a, it's a rather, coming up with a reasonable balance of having sufficient specificity that we've got good instructions. That it, that we've done what we can to nail down to the extent that it's reasonable to do at this time to nail down the. To nail down what it is that, that we're approving. Uh, cause it's going to be a legal document, we, we, we can't just. We, we, we can't approve a concept in and of itself, and we've had a discussion on that and some ideas about. I think maximizing the, you know, treating this as a maximum footprint, footprint and that sort of thing. Um, and it's up to us to figure out just what it is that we need in order to feel comfortable that we've been specific enough. But I think, at least in my view, it's, I wouldn't, it's just, for example, and having completely done plans and so on, there. Are very good reasons turn in terms of, of the injury to the applicant, uh. Uh, that would go along with, with trying to do, to do too much there. Uh, so I, I mean, that sort of is conceptually where I am and it's just as vague as the plans before us, but. The whole point is for the architects, ours or yours, to come up with sufficiently. Specific things that were comfortable that we've struck the right balance, we've been reasonable without being unduly. And I thought our discussion was, had led us to something. Like that, I mean, looking at the envelopes, maximum footprint, dealing with the. You know, there may be some other, dealing with the volume was another, was another issue. I mean, those are kinds of things which seem to me that if the written conditions would. Could be enough, but that really, I would, I would very much be guided by the opinions of others on the board as to whether that was the case.
So I know in the past, when we have considered variances, what we've done is sort of. Done a series of. Votes on the individual. Criteria to see where everyone stands and to see if we're. If we're disposed to issuing the variance. We, I don't know, since we've sort of amended our, our procedures to closing and then voting at a subsequent once the. This, but I think we need this information before we can proceed with the writing of a. Of a decision, so. Would offer to, to members of the board, if they, if there's any particular things they would like to. Bring up at this stage, we can. Uh, do that, but then I would. Encourage us to, to, to do. Uh, a series of straw polls to determine if we think that the four criteria are met. Uh, going criteria by criteria and then if the, if the board. Through that process determines that a variance would be. Would be warranted, then we can uh, further discuss how we would craft uh, conditions on that. And then the board can vote to. To either close or continue depending on. On that, uh, to try to not draw things out too much later, so. Are there, is there anything else, are there any other questions from the board or concerns that they want to raise before we? Delve into this. Seeing done, okay, so there are. Variance is under chapter ten of section forty A, or chapter forty A in the zone, in the state code. Uh, there are required findings that the board must make in order for a variance to be granted. The first is that, uh, there are circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape or topography. Especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. That would substantiate the granting of a variance. I think we've noted that there seem to be circumstances relating to all three of these, um, the soil conditions being the. The extensive ledge on the site, uh, particularly close to the surface, uh, the shape of the lot having a. Uh, sort of a pinch point, um, on the north side and the topography, uh. I think the applicant noted that there's, I think there's an eighteen foot drop from one side to the other. Of the lot. Those, these are not general to the zoning district. And the question is, would they substantiate the? The granting of a variance, so, um. I would just go through, through everybody's name and, uh, you just can be a yes or no as to whether you feel that the board can. Make that finding, uh, so Mister Dupont.
Yes.
Mister Hanlon.
Yes.
Mister Holly.
Yes.
Little blank. And the chair says yes, okay, that brings us to number two, why the literal enforcement of the provisions of the zoning bylaw specifically relating to the circumstances affecting the land or structures noted above. Would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or the applicant. So the literal, if, the only thing that's in question here is the, this dimension for the front yard setback, um. The applicant has come before us requesting a reduction by four point two feet in the front yard setback to twenty point eight. Which matches what the current setback is for the property. And the intention for that is that, uh. Barring that, if the full twenty five feet was to be imposed, um, it would push the building. Effectively back into the, uh, the ledge and back into the slope of the property. Um, and also it would, uh, push it into the pinch point. That was noted before, that would, uh, limit the. The, the developability of the, of the site in that corner. So. Um, those would be my senses to the literal enforcement. So again, we'll do a vote of the board, um. To the question of whether the literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw. Specifically relating to the circumstances affecting land destruction noted above, would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise to the petitioner, yes, Mister.
Just quickly, I agree with everything you said so far, but I'm also moved to some extent by the fact that as you move it back into. As you move it back, you move it into a more wooded area that would cause the. The last of the destruction or at least threaten. Mature vegetation and while that's also, that is also something that we'd consider under the next criteria. It's a significant loss, financial or otherwise, for the applicant as well. So I'd just include that as part of my list.
Well taken, Mister Hanlon. Okay, so vote of the board, yes or no on the criteria two, um, Mister Dupont.
Yes.
Mister Hanlon.
Yes.
Mister Holly.
Yes.
Little blank.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that brings us to number three, how desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. So the desirable relief is just the, the front yard setback, effectively it maintains the front yard setback that's there today. Granted, the building will be built. Uh, more substantially closer to that line, um, than prior. But in, in this case, um. It's not so close to the, to the streets, so close to the. Um, to the abutting neighbors that it would. Be detrimental to the public good and as was stated before, it does allow the. Uh, the maintenance of, uh, the existing tree canopy, uh, especially towards the western end of the site. Which. Would, which, which is lost would probably be a, a worse detriment to the public good. Are there any other comments on number three? And then voting through, Mister Dupont.
Yes.
Mister Hanlon.
Yes.
Mister Holly.
Yes.
Little blank.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, brings us to number four, how desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating. From the intent or purpose of the zoning bylaw. So the grant here is. Does, will not substantially change or nullify the. Intent of the purpose of the zoning bylaw, um, it does still allow for the development of the property in a way that. Allows the homeowner to, to, uh, to fully enjoy their property, preserves the. Value of this property and abutting properties. And as Mister Hanlon had noted as well, um, one of the purposes is to not preserve nonconformities. In general, in this case, um. The, the board would feel that the. The maintenance, the change to, uh, eliminate the front yard setback, nonconformity does not. Uh, the, the imposition of that would not yield, uh, back sufficient, um. Benefit to the public in a way that, uh, would justify making that adjustment. Is there any other comments in regards to that point? Seeing none, we'll vote through Mister Dupont.
Yes.
Mister Hanlon.
Yes.
Mister Holly.
Yes.
Little blank.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so the board has found that it is able to, um. Justify the criteria for a variance, uh, so. Then. The next question before the board would be the question of conditions. Um, there have been a couple of conditions put forward. Um, that were discussed with the applicant, one was to limit. The gross floor area to a number that I have written on somewhere here, there it is, four thousand three hundred forty five square feet. Four comma, three, four, five square feet. There are three standard conditions. Yes.
Um, so are we also going to limit the, uh, the footprint to what is shown?
Do we? Yeah, so I was. Going to bring up our standard condition number one, so standard condition number one is the plans and specifications approved by the board for this variance shall be the final plans and specifications submitted to the building inspector of the town of Arlington. In connection with this application for zoning relief. Should be no deviation during construction from the approved plans and specifications without the express written approval of the zoning board of appeals. So try to think, do we need to? Amend that, given that we are only approving the footprint? Or? Do we? Do we include a separate? Condition. I think we've done before, would we say something like notwithstanding? The requirements. Of condition number one. The. Building. Shall conform. To the footprint. Established. By drawing.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
Um, I wanted to just mention that, uh, that Mister Marks. Mentioned is that. What he really is sort of hoping to commit to is that this is the maximum footprint.
Yeah.
That he could, he could go left, so. You know, not exceed might be a better kind of formulation, but something at least gets, that gets the idea that this, this is the outer limit, not. This precise thing he has to try to do.
Ah, okay. Yeah, unfortunately, I was hoping this had a date on it, but I don't see a date. Uh, so let's see, so required condition number one, the building shall not. The building. Shall not exceed. The building shall not exceed the footprint established by drawing eight point O three. Submitted. To the board. As a part of the application. So this would be notwithstanding the requirements of condition number one, the building shall not exceed the footprint established by drawing eight point. O three submitted to the board as a part of the application. Is that? Sound reasonable?
I think so, if it's reasonable, Mister Mark, it's reasonable.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Uh, the number two, our standard condition number two. Um, is that the building inspector is hereby notified there to monitor the site, should proceed with appropriate enforcement procedures. At any time they determine that violations are present, the building inspector shall proceed under section three point one of the zoning bylaw and under the provisions of chapter forty, section twenty one D. Of the Massachusetts general laws and institute noncriminal complaints, if necessary, the building inspector may also approve and institute appropriate criminal action. Also in accordance with section three point one. And standard condition number three is the board shall maintain continuing jurisdiction with respect to this variance grant. Um, and then we have the two that we had discussed, one is that would limit the gross floor area to four thousand three hundred forty five square feet. The second would be the notwithstanding the requirements of condition one, the building shall not exceed the footprint established by drawing A O three submitted to the board as a part of the application. Are there any statements in regards to anything else that the board want to include? I mean, there's a bunch of stuff that obviously the applicant is going to have to go prepare a tree plan that's got to be approved by the tree warden. They're going to have to prepare uh, stormwater calculations um and work with the town engineer. Are there they're gonna have to do the good neighbor agreement, which they already know about. But once the board releases this, we can't request or review the drawings again. So um, are there any other conditions that the board feel would be appropriate for this application?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Mr. Holly.
Do we, um, I know you had mentioned about clarification with the with the inspector on Jason Street side and the Pleasant View side, view roadside, um, the setback, uh, do we set that or are we all set on that one? Cause um, like you said, the steps on the side of the Pleasant View Road dictates it to be the front as well. And you know, across the Jason Street too. So twenty eight when established sets for both of them.
Yeah. That's a good point. So should we say that the board uh, let's see, the board establishes the front yard setback along both Pleasant View Road and
Jis.
and Street. As twenty, oops, twenty point eight feet to match the existing condition as shown submitted drawings. Okay. So the board establishes the front yard setback along both Pleasant View Road and Jason Street as twenty point eight feet to match the existing condition as shown on the submitted drawings. And then all other dimensional requirements remain as per the zoning bylaw. Yep, so we're just doing the front yard setback. That's the only one. Then we're setting a max GFA, we're setting a max footprint and we're setting the minimum front yard setback. Anything else? Seeing nothing, um, I will move, uh, Mr. Hanlon, are you willing to take part in the practice in the the creation of the record of this proceeding?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So with that, I move that the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington close the public hearing for docket three eight five one two oh eight Jason Street.
Second.
And so, uh, with the, once we pass the this vote, um, the board will, the board can no longer accept any new information on the hearing, but the board will prepare decision, the written decision will be presented at the uh, at our subsequent hearing, which will be on June twenty fourth, so we'll vote then on the final decision. That decision will be recorded with the town clerk uh, starting the twenty day appeal period. And then after twenty days, you can pick up a certified copy of the decision. Uh, it can be filed with the with the registry of deeds in Cambridge. Um, and you can proceed with the building permit, but you're not near a building permit yet. So you can assuming there is no appeals, you can just proceed with the development of your drawing set. So with that, we'll move on to the final vote. Uh, so this is a vote to close, uh, the hearing. So Mr. Dupont.
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yeah.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. Little blank?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Branowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes, yes, we are closed on two oh eight Jason Street. Thank you very much for being with us this evening.
I hope I'm the last one.
Nope, we got one more.
Oh. There's no world in which I could go party or club with you guys, that's for sure. I I'm all done.
Um, so with that, we return to our agenda. Um, and it brings us to item number eight on our agenda, which is docket three eight five three, three Inverness Road. Uh, first I'd like to express my uh, the appreciations of the patience of the applicant uh, for sticking with us throughout the evening. And um, we can go ahead and introduce themselves and tell us what they are, would like to do.
Sounds good. Good evening. I'm Brad Perkins, uh, living at three Inverness Road. I do have some some charts prepared if it's possible to share my screen.
Absolutely. Mr. Rollston, do you mind giving Mr. Perkins the ability to share?
You're all set.
Thank you.
All right. So are those coming up?
Yes, they are.
All right. So just a quick recap of where we are. Uh, this is where our house is located, Arlington Heights area. Uh, that's south on the corner of Inverness and Aberdeen. Um, so here's a site plan. Oh, here's our existing house footprint. Uh, we have a garage that's uh, detached, uh, sits out on the side. Uh, and you can see the house actually, uh, you know, it's nonconforming, uh, sets kind of across the setback lines. Um, what we're looking to do is, uh, we have a porch on the on the back here and we're looking to make it a little bit bigger. Um, and so we're looking, I I think, just to continue the, you know, the exception of the variance that we we currently have uh, for this project. So I'll show you where we are. So this is the back of the house. Here's the photo, uh, just taken from our driveway, looking back uh, and onto our back, uh, uh, door there, uh, porch is maybe five feet wide, uh, maybe about ten or eleven feet long. Uh, we're just looking to make it a little bit bigger so we can all sit out there. We've got a family of four. And we're looking just to put a picnic table out there, um, so we can eat outside. Uh, and so the idea is to to make this a little bit bigger uh, and extend it out towards the garage and make it, uh, extend it a little bit towards the viewer here. So um, we've been working with our our neighbor, uh, next door neighbor is an architect, uh, Brian LeBeau, and he put these plants together for us here. So you can see down in the bottom, uh, drawing here. Uh, how the the, uh, you know, the the porch is extended out towards the the garage. So this is looking, um, at the side of the house from the Aberdeen street side, side of the street. Um, this is on the upper right hand corner here, you can see where, uh, it's kind of looking at the back of the house, um, from our our side neighbors. You can see where the the walkway is up to the the porch. And then, uh, this is, uh, the upper left view is just looking at the 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 proposed, uh, plans from where the garage would be here. So um, so that's, that's pretty much it. That's what we're looking to do. Uh, you can see here in the in the, um, uh, in the photo, you know, we've got just a, uh, you know, pretty simple design. We're going to maintain uh, kind of all the features there and and keep it in the style of the house. And we'll put in, uh, a patio, like a some pavers there, uh, to kind of finish out the space. Uh, bring that walkway out to the, uh, the driveway. I think that's all I have to say. So happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. So what this is before, this is a special permit request under section five three nine D of the zoning bylaw. Which says the porches, decks, steps and landings in the required setback are not considered to be within the foundation wall and may not be enclosed, extended or built upon except by special permit. So as the applicant had noted, that that porch actually extends into the required side yard. And so therefore, uh, it does require us to provide a special permit in order for them to be able to to extend it, even though the majority of it is within the is beyond the setback. Um, the building inspector requested that, uh, they come before us for a special permit. Um, just one question, you hadn't said in the in your presentation that the existing porch was granted by variance? Is that for definite?
I don't know if it was.
Just because it's in the setback?
So the existing porch, uh, basically follows the the line of the house here.
Mm hmm.
Um, and so I think it's outside the setback line. Uh, you know, we're closer to our neighbor with, I think we're eight feet from our neighbors, you know, the deck is about eight feet from our neighbors', uh, property line. Uh, the proposed design actually pushes that porch a little bit. You know, uh, away from the the property line, but we're still you know, outside the setback line there that that's shown. So uh, we're outside that line by a foot or so.
Right. But the but the porch that's there today wasn't do you know definitively if it was approved by the granting of a special permit or variance in the past?
I don't know the history of the the porch that's there. Yeah. So I I didn't mean to imply anything about the that current porch.
All right. Yeah, we certainly have no record of it did hasn't, it didn't come up that that one had been issued in the past. So
Okay.
Um, and given the age of the house, I'm not the least bit surprised it sits where it sits and that the porch straddles the line. So
Yep.
Okay. Are there questions from the board? None. If I go ahead and ask you to stop the share.
Yep.
We'll ask if there are any members of the public who wish to address this application, but I don't think there are any members of the public remaining. We've even lost Mr. Moore, which is highly unusual. So going once, going twice, go ahead and close public comment period for this hearing. So we have before us, this is just a request to extend, um, an existing porch. It's being done in a very thoughtful and uh, well reasoned manner to allow for the increased enjoyment of the home by the applicant. So section five three nine D does not have any special findings that need to be made, um, in order to grant approval. It just uh, relies on the required, the typical required findings for a special permit. Only any questions or comments before I run down those? All right. So we need to find that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts. Um, so the benefits to the users will far exceed, um, any adverse effects, uh, that in a large porch, especially given the position of this porch where it's between the house and the garage and a position that really has no effect on any one else in the neighborhood. Uh, the requested use is allowed or allowed by special permit in the district, uh, under section five three nine D, it is allowed to be expanded upon. Um, and so uh, that is met. The required use is essential or desirable to public convenience or welfare. Uh, it's certainly desirable to the homeowner to be able to fully enjoy their property, um, which encourages them to to stay an active, uh, part of the the community and to, um, allows for the, uh, the orderly expansion of the of the property. Um, requested use will not create undue traffic ingestion or impair pedestrian safety. Uh, it will do neither, it has nothing to do with traffic and it is nowhere near the sidewalks. It doesn't impact pedestrian safety and the applicant has, uh, maintained a a space between the porch and the garage to allow for, uh, orderly access through the site. Um, the requested use will not overload any public systems. Um, this will really have no impact on public systems. Uh, special regulations for the requested use are fulfilled. There are no special regulations. Requested use will not impair the character integrity of the district. Um, this is a very simple request and, uh, expertly designed uh, by the, uh, the neighbor of the, uh, of the applicant, uh, very much in keeping with the with the existing house and the character of the neighborhood. And requested use will not be detrimental to the public health or welfare. Um, it'll, uh, lead to increased enjoyment of the home, which is beneficial to the public health of the of the the resident family. And the requested use will not cause an excess of use detrimental to the neighborhood. Really is uninapplicable here, uh, whereas where it is the use that is the for which the district is intended. Are there any questions in regards to those proposed findings? Seeing none, um, the, should the board vote to approve the special permit? There are three standard conditions, which were just read into the record at the prior hearing. Uh, so won't go through those again. Um, are there any additional conditions which members of the board feel would be appropriate for the granting of this special permit? Seeing none. This is a request for special permit under five three nine D. The board has, uh, reviewed the findings that it required to make and has reviewed the the conditions. So given that, uh, Mr. Hammond, would you assist in the, uh, direction of the production of a decision in this case?
Mr. Chairman, I will.
Thank you very much. Um, and with that, I would move that the zoning board of appeal close the public hearing for docket three eight five three, three Inverness Road.
Second.
Thank Mr. Hanlon. So as we stated in the in the prior case, um, at the May twenty fourth hearing, the board will vote to approve the written decision. Um, after which the decision will be submitted to the town clerk, which starts a twenty day appeal period at the conclusion of the twenty days, uh, the uh, assigned, a notarized copy of the decision will be provided, um, at town hall, and then you can take that to, uh, the registry of deeds in Cambridge, uh, for filing. And then you can, uh, pull your building permit. So with that, roll call vote of the board to close, uh, the public hearing for docket three eight five three, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yeah.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Little blank?
Yes.
Mr. Branowski?
Yes.
And chair votes, yes, we are closed on three eight five three. Thank you very much. And again, appreciate your patience this evening.
Absolutely. I I had a good time listening to everybody.
Oh, good.
Yeah, it was really, I was really, I mean, I learned a lot. So that was cool.
You do have an open associate position if you're interested. I just leave that out there.
My plate's full right now, but, uh, I'll keep it in mind for, you know, my civil duty, uh, maybe maybe down the road a little ways.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
All right. Appreciate it. Enjoy. Have a good evening.
You too. All right. So now we move on to administrative items. Uh, these items will relate to the operation of the board and as such, shall generally be conducted without input from the general public. The board will not take up any new business on prior hearings. It will be the introduction of any new information that matters previously brought before the board. So with that, uh, brings us to item two on our agenda, which is uh, the written decision for docket three eight four eight twenty four Woodbury Street. Uh, this is a decision written by Mr. Hanlon, distributed to the board for questions and comments, and final version issued out to the board. Are there any additional questions, um, or comments in regards to the written decision for Woodbury Street? Seeing none, I move that the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington approve and adopt the written decision in docket three eight four eight twenty four Woodbury Street, which grants a special permit under section three one, eh, excuse me, eight one three B in the zoning bylaw. Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. So vote of the board, uh, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. Little blank?
Yes.
And the chair votes, yes, that is approved. It brings to item three on our agenda, which is the approval of the minutes from the May twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five hearing. Uh, this were prepared by uh, our clerk, Ms. Rollston, submitted to the board for, uh, review. And are there any additional questions or comments in regards to the minutes from May twenty seventh? Seeing none, I move that the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington approve the minutes from the May twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five meeting of the board.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Roll call vote of the board, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yeah.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Little blank?
Yes.
Mr. Branowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes, yes. So the minutes are approved. Uh, that is the last item on our agenda. Uh, as we noted, we have, uh, June twenty fourth, we have two new cases and a few things that we held over. two new cases and a few things that we held over. So with that, Colleen, do we have anything coming up on July eighth?
We currently have nothing for July eighth. We had no applications in time for the deadlines.
Woo-hoo. All right. So we make it, we make it July eighth off. And then I sent an email around to everyone, just asking people when they're around this summer. So so far, I think I might be the only person, I'm on literally on a plane on August twelfth, so will not be available for that date. But otherwise, I think most people seem to be around for the summer. So plenty of time to get together. So with that, I would like to thank you all for your participation in tonight's meeting of the Arlington zoning board of appeals. I appreciate everyone's patience throughout the meeting. I'd especially like to thank Colleen Ralston, Mike Champa, Mike Cunningham, and Jaclyn Munson for their assistance in preparing for and hosting our online meeting. Please note the purpose of the board's recording in the meeting is to ensure the creation of an accurate record of its proceedings. It is our understanding the recording made by ACMI will be available on demand at acmi.tv within the coming days. If anyone has comments or recommendations, please send them via email to zba@town.earlington mh.us. That email address is also listed on the zoning board of appeals website. I would just briefly note, we rely heavily on ACMI for the recording of the meetings and for posting them and making them available to the general public. ACMI does have a deficit in its funding because it is the majority of its funding comes through a surcharge on the cable bill and where most people have dropped cable. They no longer have the funding that they previously had. So if anyone is interested in helping to fund ACMI, they have information available on their website at acmi.tv. So with that, to conclude tonight's meeting, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
You're moved.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hanlon and Mr. DuPont, roll call vote of the board to adjourn. Mr. DuPont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yeah.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. Blank?
Yes.
Mr. Branowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, the board is adjourned. Thank you also very much.